I'm glad the Transportation Committee is still needed, which may help to explain three people, but I need four. Mr. Fuhr is here. I only strike three for a quorum. Quorum. Council meeting please come to order. Good morning. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on February 6, 2001. The council has 15 members while 14 in a vacant seat at the moment. We meet on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at approximately 10 o'clock. It is now 10:25. We are being viewed on Channel 35 and available on council phone, and this being the first meeting of the first Tuesday meeting of the month, we are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, they ought to call a roll first. Good idea.
President Chick, Fuhr, Glanter, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Cowsy, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, French, Black, Walters, Faro, 10 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. So, since we do have a quorum, would everybody please stand for the pledge? And Mr. Savornich, would you like to lead us?
Thank you, Madam President. Would you please place your right hand over your heart and proudly say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Please be seated, and we're going to hear next for our invocation from Sister Nuala Ryan, who has had a very interesting time watching us assemble here this morning. Sister.
Good morning to the God in each of us and to all our brothers and sisters in the city of the angels. God, we welcome you into the presence of this council meeting. Let us pray. I bow to the sacred in all creation. May my spirit fill the world with beauty and wonder. May my mind seek truth with humility and openness. May my heart forgive without limits. May my love for friend, enemy, and outcast be without measure. May my needs be few; my living simple. May my actions bear witness to the suffering of others. May my hands never harm a living being. May my steps stay on the journey of justice. May my tongue speak for those who are poor without fear of the powerful. May my prayers rise with patient discontent until no child is hungry. May my life's work be a passion for peace and nonviolence. May my soul rejoice in the present moment. May my imagination overcome death and despair with new possibility. And may I risk reputation, comfort, and security to bring this hope for all our brothers and sisters in this city of the angels. May you act justly, love tenderly, and walk humbly with our God. Amen.
Thank you, Sister. All right. Let's go through the agenda first.
Before starting the regular items, there are a few matters to be received if I want to continue. Items number 22 and 24, requests from Los Angeles Housing Department and the council offices. If these matters... offices that these matters be received and filed. 22, 23, and 24.
Without objection? Any objection, members of the council? Those are received and filed.
Item number 32, a request from the city attorney to have items 32A and B continued one day until February 7th.
Without objection, we'll continue 32A and B.
32G, a request from the city attorney to have this matter withdrawn from the agenda and referred to the city attorney's office. 32G.
All right. Without objection, 32G is referred back.
Item number 34, a request from Council District 6 that this matter be continued till April 6th.
Any objection to that? All right. Without objection, item 34 is continued.
On the regular agenda, items number 1 through 3 are items for which public hearings have been noticed.
Have been noticed, yes. We have cards on both 1 and 3. So let's call those special and see what else we've got here.
Then item number 2 is before you.
All right. So item number 2, members of the council, any?
A motion is required from the floor. I believe that's in Councilmember Pacheco's district.
Mr. Pacheco.
As that we find that the permit and the applicant satisfy the public necessity, public convenience necessity requirements under state law, and move approval for item number 2.
All right. Members of the council, you've heard the motion. Anybody else? Open the roll. Close the roll on Mr. Pacheco's motion. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. All right. That's approved.
There's a request that item number 51 be sent to the city attorney's office.
Is there any objection to referring item 51? Seeing none, item 51 is referred to the city attorney's office.
Items numbers 4 through 17 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number 16, a motion is required.
All right. We do not have cards on any of those unless you're about to hand me one. Okay. Members of the council, any specials 4 through, sorry, 17?
4 through 17. 16 requires a motion.
We need the motion, yes. But let's get, all right. Mr. Fuhrer moves 16A. Any specials? Seeing no specials, open the roll on items 4 through 17 with 16. I'm sorry. Mr. Pacheco.
13 be referred to the council district office.
All right. If there's no objection, item 13 will be referred to Mr. Pacheco's office. So, anybody else? Okay. Items 4 through 12, 14 through 17, 16, it's 16A. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Item 4 is an ordinance, so that?
Goes over one week.
Goes over one week.
To February 13th for a second reading.
Okay. 37. Okay. Hold on. Okay. What do we have next here?
Items number 18 through 31, with the exception of 22, 23, and 24, which have been acted on. Those are items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right. We have cards on, no, we don't have cards on any of those. Actually, I have a question on item 27, so can we call that special? All right. Ms. Walters calls 28C special.
And refer item 30 to Arts Health and Humanities Committee.
All right. Is there any objection to referring item? Ms. Walters, Mr. Burnson wants to know why you want to refer it.
What if this has got to do with arts? This is tobacco money.
It has to do with health.
Okay.
All right. Without objection, and you'll have that back sometime soon.
Come back soon so we can get some of this money to work.
I think you're both on the same side here. Okay. Item was, that was 30, right?
Item number 30.
Is referred to Arts Health and Humanities. Item 28C is, I've lost that. What'd we do with 28C?
Okay. 28C is special by Councilmember Walters.
It's called special, okay. All right. So that leaves?
18 through 21, 25, 26.
29.
27A through B.
No, 27, I called special.
28A through B.
I'm sorry. 28A and B.
29 and 31.
All right. Any other specials? Seeing none, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Are we there?
11 ayes.
Thank you. Those are approved.
On the continuation agenda, item number 33 is an item notice for public hearing.
I don't believe we have any cards on item. Let's just double check here. Hold on. No, we do not have any cards on item 33. All right. So in that case, the public hearing is closed, members of the council, item 33.
I have an amending motion, Madam President.
Push the button. All right. Ms. Chick. Oh, that's all. Just you have an amending motion? All right. Let's take note of the amending motion. Laura, maybe you should just describe what the amendment is. Well, just describe it. We can do it right now.
It's for a childcare facility on Fallbrook Avenue, and the amending motions modify the conditions so that some trees can be saved.
Okay. Anybody have any further comment? In that case, Ms. Chick moves, I've already lost what number we're on here. Item 33 as amended. Open the roll on 33 as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Next.
Items number 35 through 41 on the continuation agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right. We do have some cards on 37. I'm sorry. What was the last number you gave me?
41.
41. All right. We have cards on 37. But a hearing has already been held, so unless somebody moves to hold an additional hearing. And the person who's here is in support of the proposal. If I don't hear a motion, we are not going to hold an additional hearing. Open the roll on items?
35 through 41.
Mr. Fuhrer calls 35 special.
Madam Chair, on item 37, there was a circulating motion that I just wanted to make sure was part of the amendment.
I don't have it.
That's what, and I see the clerk holding on to it, so I don't, or the CLA's office. They're circulating it right now. But we had a reduction of 244,000, something like that, in regards to the overall block rent. And so this just makes an adjustment for that purpose.
All right. So you will move then 37 as amended?
As amended.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Open the roll on?
Okay.
Yes. Let's just hold 37 then. And let's vote on 36 through 41. Do we have any other specials? Okay. Open the roll on 36, 38 through 41. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Those are approved.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I ask for a reconsideration on item 40 for the purpose of voting no?
Yes. Actually, don't need to do that. We'll just record you as a no. It doesn't change the outcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Record. You got that. All right. We up to 42?
Okay. Items number 42 through 51 on the continuation agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right. Now, on item 42, Ms. Misakowski? Okay. Please take note that she's out of the room. She has to recuse herself on this one. We have one person, Julie Inouye. Step right up. And you're in favor, right? Okay. That's about all you need to say.
Okay. We're in favor.
All right. Thank you.
Can I give a brief history of it?
Sure. Go right ahead.
All right. Honorable Madam President, honorable council members, my name is Julie Inouye. I'm co-founder of the Vista Del Mar Neighbors Association, an active neighborhood watch community group in the village of Playa del Rey. The history of the Biona Wetlands easement resolution began in 1990 during the penancy of the lawsuit between the Friends of Biona Wetlands and Playa Vista, a resolution of prescriptive easements claimed by the Vista Del Mar Neighbors homeowners along the western borders of the wetlands north of Culver Boulevard. It was required to complete the settlement of the lawsuit and to commence Biona Wetlands dune restoration. Our community was a supporter of this wetland restoration and thus was asked to facilitate in this negotiation. In May of 1991, the Vista Del Mar Neighbors Association negotiated a settlement by which the homeowners' easement claims were settled in return for a grant of a uniform restricted easement. As a result of the settlement, Playa Vista has agreed to underground utilities along the adjacent area of Vista Del Mar and a portion of Esplanade. The street lighting issue now before the council is a direct result of the undergrounding project, in fact, is a step, is a last step except for the street repaving. The new lighting will replace existing utility pole lights, which must be removed along the all above ground, along the utility wires. Ironically, Playa Vista had opposed paying for the lighting, but has reluctantly agreed to do so in order to complete this project. Obviously, the community is in support of this final step as it is necessary to complete the settlement. At this time, I'd like to thank all the Los Angeles city agencies who've done an outstanding job in executing this unique project with the leadership of Honorable Councilmember Ruth Galaner and her staff. I thank you all for your time and support of this community project.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and we are, I believe, ready to vote. Open the roll on item 42. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Just 42.
Just 42.
10 ayes.
Thank you. That's approved.
And the ordinance will go over?
The ordinance goes over one week, but the first part is approved. And we need to do forthwith on item 10 and item 17. And we are? Okay. Let's take these one at a time, and we'll get to that.
The next grouping is 43 through 50.
All right. But, Ms. Walters wants to continue item 44. Is that correct?
One week. The city, the CLA's report is just being distributed. And I think council members want to look at that.
That would be February 13th.
Hang on. All right. So we're going to, is there any objection to continuing item 44?
Well, a question on item 44. Maybe the CLA can help us. Is there a timeliness and urgency concern on item 44? Okay.
Okay. All right. So item 44 is continued one week. That's the 13th.
Madam President, for items 45, I move both 45A and B, the amendment.
All right. Now, we do have a card on item 45, so we're going to have to hold that, call that special for a moment. So item 43, Mr. Savornich, you had another item? Okay. Let's call item 47 special for an amendment. That leaves, and 45, because we have somebody who wants to be heard, that leaves 43, 46, 48, 49, and 50. Any other specials? Hearing none, open the roll on those. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right. Those are approved. Forthwith on, I hear a voice, 50. Thank you. Okay. Next.
Brings you back to item number 1, called special. There is a member of the public wishes to be heard.
This is certainly true. There are a number of members of the public who wish to be heard. All right. We have, hold on while I count them. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. We have 10 people who wish to be heard. So I'm going to open the public here, and I'm just going to call you in the order in which I have these cards in front of me. And remembering that there are 10 of you, ask you to be as concise as you can, and if you're coming after somebody who's already said what you want to say, "me too" is an acceptable response. Candace Whalen, followed by Emmylou Ayers, Leslie Lombard. I'll read you some more after that. Would you come over to this one? Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Candace Whalen. I live at 284 South Muirfield, and this is the first time I've spoken before the city council, so please bear with my nervousness. During the previous hearings on this matter, we've heard several arguments in favor of this parking lot. Many of us have been surprised by these arguments because we think that the parking lot is not a good thing. It's not consistent with the land use in Hancock Park. But apparently, these arguments have been persuasive, or we wouldn't be here now. So I'd like to comment on them. It's a little bit difficult to do rebuttal before you've actually heard the arguments, but that's where I come in the sequence. We've heard repeatedly that Marlboro School is the white knight who, by building a lovely parking lot, is rescuing the neighborhood from a longstanding eyesore. Now, this property has certainly been unattractive for years, but as long as its owner was not interested in selling or fixing the home, there was nothing anyone could do about it. When the property did go on the market, there were many potential buyers, but the school and its friends, speculating that they could obtain the variances necessary to build a parking lot, chose to offer a remarkably high bid. We've also heard that there is now no possible use for this lot other than parking, that this lot is in such a bad location that no one would buy it for a residence at all, or, in a contradictory statement, that any buyer who is now willing to purchase the lot for as much as Marlboro paid for it, would surely construct an enormous mansion, or perhaps a halfway house. The absurdity of these arguments is self-evident. We all know that zoning and use ordinances limit the size of a house that may be built and restrict what it can be used for. We also know that any lot will sell at the right price, and that it would be entirely inappropriate for the city of Los Angeles to grant a land use change just so that a private institution won't risk having to sell a piece of real estate for less than it paid for it. This hearing is not about white knights or the cost of real estate. It's about parking. Specifically, it's about how much parking the school says it needs, how much the city of Los Angeles says it needs, and how much it already has. The numbers in this regard are ambiguous. By some accounts, the school has already, already has as much parking as the city requires. By other accounts, it needs something like 11 additional spaces, far less than the 44 spaces that are planned for this lot. If indeed additional parking is required, why not consider an alternative that no one objects to? That is, less restrictive parking on Rossmore. You have received copies of petitions signed by many Rossmore residents requesting this very change in order to reduce traffic speed on their street. The homeowners association has also been advocating this change for the same reason. A solution in which everyone wins is to provide for the small number of additional parking spaces that may be required by granting the request of the Rossmore residents for less restrictive parking on their street, and thus protecting the single-family character of the neighborhood by maintaining the current land use on the lot in question.
Thank you. Emmylou Ayers, followed by Leslie Lombard. Actually, it seems like everybody's on the same side here, so, go ahead.
Yes, I think we are. My name is Emmylou Ayers, and I live at 284 South.
Can you pull the microphone up close to your mouth? There you go. Thanks.
I live just to the west of this piece of property that's in question, and have been at all meetings from the very beginning. The meetings at the school when they were first proposing this, the meetings at the city hall, and even private meetings with Barbara Wagner in our backyard to gain support for the school. And Barbara would come and say, "What can we do to get you to come along with ours?" And we just said, "Don't build a parking lot." Would you want a parking lot in your backyard with the noise from cars and the idling, the fumes when they're idling, waiting to get out into traffic? It's not only an inconvenience to us and lowering the value of our property. All the reasons that you will hear for not doing this. It will. You'll hear it from the homeowners association and others, and it changes the nature of Hancock Park, and a precedent will be set that will be a difficult one to. Park, and a precedent will be set that will be a difficult one to combat. In spite of the fact that Ms. Wagner came to us a number of times to see what we would take for supporting the school's position, we were too strong, in our opinion, of what ramifications the action would have on the neighborhood in general, to simply sell out and abandon our principles. We offered to have a dialogue with the school officials to try and reach some sort of a compromise, but it seems they couldn't not see that there might be any solutions but theirs. I appreciate the school's position of having to find some additional parking to fulfill their requirements for the permit for the Arden Project. I also appreciate the community's desire to rid itself of the house that is an eyesore. I think that there is a solution to this problem. No one will be totally satisfied, because that's what compromise is about, but I think it can be a solution that everyone could live with. The school is obliged to have one hundred and thirty-four parking spaces at the end of Phase Three of the Arden Project. At the end of Phase Two, the school has complied with the requirements of one hundred and twenty-three spaces on site. There may be as many as one hundred and thirty-five to one hundred and forty. To be fair, let's take the one hundred and twenty-three spaces that they already have confirmed as being available right now. That leaves the need for only eleven more spaces required to conform with their use permit. If the school only needs eleven more spaces, why build a lot for four times that many? Why not build a garage that looks like a house from the street? It could have the fifty-foot setback that the Homeowners Association wants without a wall around it. It could be landscaped with lawns and shrubbery, and the wall that they had originally planned to go around the entire property could start at the front edge of the house, go west on Rossmore, around Third Street, to the wall that is, that exists there. It would keep the appearance of Hancock Park as it is, which is what most of us are really looking for.
Thank you. Can I ask you to wind up? I do have eight more people who want to be heard. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next is Leslie Lombard, and then Michael McMonigal now is one of you. Seems to be the attorney and the other one, or the architect and the other one the client. Maybe you can combine here. Go ahead.
Yes. I'm Leslie Lombard, and I'm here on behalf of Urban Concepts. We're representing the appellant in this case, Margaret and Michael McMonigal, who are neighbors of the abutting subject parking lot. We are appealing the findings which were made in the CUP for the parking facility. We believe that the parking lot use is not in character with the single-family residential uses on the block, and the making, and that making the findings to support the parking lot would be inappropriate. Additionally, we are appealing conditions fifteen and sixteen in the PAD case, which raises the threshold for the required valet service for special events at the school from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and forty patrons. This change appears to represent an intent to utilize the new parking facility for special events at the school. Our clients are opposed to the use of this parking lot for special events during the late evening hours and weekends. Moreover, in the event that our appeal is denied, we would like a commitment from Marlborough that the parking lot will not be used for late evening special events, and that future actions will not be attempted for further expansion into the residential neighborhood west of Rossmore. However, we are here today to ask that the council to grant the appeal to deny the use of this site for a parking lot, and instead direct the Department of Transportation to allow AM peak period parking along the west side of Rossmore, which would provide the school with the additional parking required. This alternative was to serve two purposes. First, Marlborough would have the parking necessary to support their activities, and second, the added parking will have a traffic calming effect within the surrounding community, which would be a win-win for both sides. The solution is outlined in our Section Four in our briefing book, which was provided to the council members. Again, we ask that you grant our appeal.
Thank you. Mr. McMonigal? I'm sorry, McMonigal.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael McMonigal. I wanted to make a brief statement regarding this, my appeal of the City Planning Commission decision to grant a conditional use permit for the property at 250 South Rossmore. This property adjoins my home. The conditional use permit will permit construction of a forty-four car parking lot on the subject property. We have opposed the decision of the City Planning Commission for several reasons. Briefly, it is, first of all, a radical change in the character of Hancock Park, which is a historic residential neighborhood of single-family homes. Second, it is unclear how much additional off-campus parking the Marlborough School still truly needs. Three, traffic problems at the corner of Third and Rossmore, which are already problematic, will be worsened by the addition of more parking very close to that intersection. And four, I believe very strongly that there are other alternatives for the subject property besides the demolition and installation of a parking lot. And I was going to introduce Ms. Lombard, who of course preceded me, so I don't need to do that. But thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Eugene Prowazor, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, followed by Michael Cornwell, Suzanne Chase, and then we'll get back into this. Go ahead.
My name is Prowazor. I'm a city employee. I'm appearing on my own time. My daughter is a student at Marlborough. She's a senior, but that is not why I'm here. Some of you heard me say this before. I am a resident of the area at 326 Lucerne. Previously, I wrote the first environmental impact report for the state, in the state of California after the Friends of Mammoth decision on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. And thereafter, part of my job responsibilities from the Department of Public Works were to be attached to the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office and advise them on all environmental matters involving city purchase, sale, or leasing of real estate. And I did that for twenty-three months until the SEQA came into effect in California. I've been a participant in all the hearings here. I am not immediately impacted by this, and I want to make that clear, but I live in an adjacent area. Given the council decisions of last year, based upon the previous planning commission decisions and ZA hearings, which required the additional parking, given the fact that the architectural renderings supplied to the Plum Committee for the city council and to the zoning commission, and in hearings by Mr. Kawashima...
Hang on one second. There's a lot of background noise up here. Can you guys move your conversations somewhere over in the corner? Go ahead. Sorry.
I am in favor of allowing the parking lot to go through unless you want to go back and change the entire thing that the city council did last year and the previous stuff did. And that's why I'm talking, I am not being compensated.
Okay. Thank you. Michael Cornwell, followed by Suzanne Chase.
Thank you, Madam President and council members. I appear to support Marlborough School in the request for a parking facility at the lot in question. This Arden Project for Marlborough has been going on, well, Barbara Wagner, the head of school, I just learned, has been head of Marlborough for eleven years, and we were working on this total project prior to Barbara's taking that position. With her arrival, the whole attitude towards the community improved. The school has been working very closely with the community. I could go into details. There'd been a very adequate public hearing before the hearing officer. He recommended this. The Plum, the, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve it. Plum Committee voted unanimously to approve it. In terms of the valet parking issue raised by Mrs. Lombard, that was aired adequately at the previous hearings, and we support the position taken by the, by the Plum Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Chase, followed by Marguerite Byrne, Mark Armbruster, and James Mullis, if I'm reading it right, and that finishes the crew. Ms. Chase.
Suzanne Chase. As a nearby resident, I am fully in support of Marlborough's using the corner for parking. I heard a couple of buzzwords at previous meetings, one of which was congestion. The congestion, which is now on the east side of Rossmore, will simply move to the west side. It doesn't add congestion. And the second was someone from the zoning board said, "Well, what about interfering with pedestrians? Any of us who live in the neighborhood know that..." I won't say there are no pedestrians on Third Street in that area, but virtually, none. So we have not a problem with the two important buzzwords. And I might add that it is a corner, undeniably, a problem. It's on two busy streets with a bus stop in front, and anyone who wants to look what people do on two busy streets need to just go down Rossmore to Rossmore and Sixth and look at the height of the hedges that those people have put up to protect their property.
Thank you. Marguerite Byrne.
Thank you. I live at 116 North Las Palmas Avenue, and I'm a member, longtime member, of the Board of Directors of the Hancock Park Homeowners Association, whom I'm representing right now. Our association is a homeowners volunteer association of twelve-hundred R1 homes in the middle of the city of Los Angeles. I'm sure most of you know what Hancock Park is. It's a beautiful area, thanks to the people who have bought the houses there. Thank the Lord for the movie people and the young people who appreciate historic residences, who spend a lot of money to maintain those residences. Our association board is very much against having a parking lot on Rossmore on the west side, where it will be the only parking lot in the whole twelve-hundred homeowner association area. It does not mean we're against Marlborough. We have very good associations with Marlborough. We have many of our meetings there. We have supported Marlborough in everything that they do, with the exception of this parking lot. As you know, they had a huge plan, which, as Mike and other people have talked about, that was, enabled them to enlarge their school in a very big way. They tore down thirteen, at least, I may be corrected, and it's fine, R1 homes in order to make their field. It was a big thing. It went well, and we were, we were happy that Marlborough can stay in that location. They needed that. This parking lot is a very different situation. The parking lot has a house on it, or will soon not have a house on it. It's very dilapidated. We also feel this corner is a very important corner. Yes, every corner in Hancock Park, we are a very urban area. Every corner is fragile. We have Third and Highland with a house being used as a house of worship there, which is an illegal use. We have now Third and Rossmore, where we're going to have a parking lot. I know what I say will not affect your judgment because it's already been decided. Our councilman, who has worked with us very closely, has chosen not to support the board in this, so I know it's going to go through, but these things have to be said. Every corner is a busy corner in Hancock Park. We are boarded, we have Wilshire, Sixth Street, Third Street, Beverly, and Melrose. To say, because we have one dilapidated house on a corner, that that corner needs to be changed to a parking lot, I think is very short-sighted. We have been very good neighbors to Marlborough, and Marlborough has been good neighbors to us. Residents who live on Rossmore, I thought the, we've suggested, and we want to push this, that the girls do park on the street, and nobody cares, and they like it. If we have the parking restrictions lifted, that means they can use all of Rossmore at every hour to park, which would be a very good idea. They also park on Muirfield, and you've heard from some Muirfield residents. Those Muirfield residents have never complained about the girls parking there because they feel they want to be good neighbors. So we want Marlborough now to also be a good neighbor. This may seem like a very insignificant thing to you and our councilperson. It is not insignificant. A parking lot, no matter how beautiful it is, is not the same as an R1 residence, and we are committed to that. We are all volunteers. We spend enormous amounts of time. Mr. Hernandez knows about the HPOZs in your area. We're going for that. We're developing a committee. We're spending huge numbers of time, energy, and money to do this. And we would like the city and the city council to support our areas in these things. I don't want to get beyond the parking issue and talk about other things.
No, please don't.
I do believe that in being good neighbors, we know this is going to go through. We hope that Marlborough, we have a lot of solutions. I think they're going to have to bite the bullet, and they're going to have to put underground parking on their property, which is east of the east side of Rossmore. It makes sense. They have a feel to do it there now. It just is a matter of money. So we appreciate their being good neighbors. We hope they appreciate us being good neighbors, but we definitely, our association cannot support this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mark Armbruster, followed by James Mullis.
I am Mark Armbruster. I represent Marlborough School in this application. Real briefly, I just want to say that Marlborough has done an impeccable job in fulfilling all their conditions of approval in operating the school. In addition to that, with this application, they have the opportunity to remove an over thirty-year eyesore in the community, and at the same time, fix, help to fix a parking problem. This is very consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood as being part of a school. We ask you to support the hearing examiner, unanimous recommendation, or decision, rather, of the Planning Commission, the unanimous recommendation of the Plum Committee, the city council office, the Windsor Square Association, and the vast majority of the community in supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullis, this will be the last speaker.
My name is Jim DeMills. I'm president of the Board of Trustees of Marlborough School.
Either you spell it funny or you write funny, and I apologize.
Well, it's a French name, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
DeMills is how it's pronounced. I'm president of the Board of Trustees. Marlborough is proud of its involvement in the Hancock Park community. We're proud of what we've done for the education of young women in Los Angeles, and we're proud that we have complied with each and every condition of the CUP that we've had. And we really thank you and hope for your support in this very important project for us. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Ms. Misakowski was first, and then Mr. Burnson.
Thank you. I think I pushed this one. I wasn't aware that Mr. Burnson was going to be here. This is just to let you know that the Planning and Land Use Management Committee did hold a lengthy hearing. To put this into context, members of the council, this is a case where we had a major conditional use application amending the school a year ago. And this case came about by way of having the one-year plan review. And in that plan review, which is a determination as to whether or not this school has lived up to all the conditions, which were very specific and dealt with carpooling and dealt with a lot of other issues, essentially, the school has had a very, very good record, and I think you heard both sides of the community on this case say the same thing, affirm that the school has done what it said it was going to do. It was during that process of hearing with the community that the community asked the school to consider looking at this particular lot, which is across the street from the school, but has been a problematic lot in the area at a corner Third and Rossmore, and look at it for the use as a parking lot. The school did that, made an application, which is what we have under appeal today. But in terms of the conditions, in terms of the working out with the large number of people from the community who have been very, very involved with the school, this was something that was recommended. It was also recommended by the council district councilman Ferraro's office, and I think it was by far the view of the members of the Planning Committee that the use as proposed with the conditions, which is not going to allow students to use it, is now not going to allow parents to drop off, is not going to allow school buses, but only the teachers, who come generally once a day and leave once a day. And even at that time, it will be, have a security guard there who will help with the traffic. It will be locked at all other times. It will be in keeping in terms of a very ornate wall and hedge, which is very much in keeping with some of the high walls and hedges, particularly on Third, along Hancock Park and into Windsor Square, that this was consistent. It was a far better use than the deteriorated condition of the property that has been, that has been maintained in for any number of years. And I think the school and the community are going to have a win-win solution in this approval, and we did recommend denial of the appeal and confirmation of the project as the Planning Commission and the zoning administrator had ruled.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson.
I think Cindy covered it pretty well, but I just want to say that the committee did hear all the testimony, and what we have here is a request to provide additional parking on a location... And what we have here is a request to provide additional parking on a location that has been a terrible eyesore for many, many years. Some of the people who claim that it shouldn't be a parking lot had an opportunity to buy it if they really were sincere about rebuilding or doing something with it. That didn't happen. But we think that this will be a major improvement, particularly with the type of conditions that have been imposed as far as the landscaping, the fencing, and we think it will benefit the neighborhood, both aesthetically and also the fact that it will provide parking so it isn't on the streets. And there were definitely conditions put in to protect the hours of operation and so forth so that it would not become a nuisance. The council office does support this, and I would urge an I vote, I vote on the granting of the appeal.
The denial of?
Denial of the appeal, excuse me.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I also rise to make the unanimous recommendation of the Plum Committee. This was a very difficult issue, and I need you to understand that when we looked at Third Street and Rossmore, some people would like to think it's a residential street. And I think we're all familiar with Third Street, and I think we're all familiar with Rossmore. Right across the street from this proposed parking lot, which, by the way, is a model parking lot in terms of the shrubbery and the greenery that is included, it's not the kind of parking lot you see downtown L.A. But right across the street is a school. I mean, everybody's testified to that. And in the corner is a bus stop on Rossmore. And so the difficulty is people would like it to remain residential. The reality is many cars use that intersection. The reality is there's already a school in that corner across the street, and it's a major school, and it's part of that community. The city of Los Angeles is changing, and this is one of the gems that shouldn't change. I understand that about Hancock Park. And at the same time, I understand there has to be some transitionary use. And again, allowing this to go on, if at some point it becomes more desirable for a residential home that will be built on that lot, that's what the market will allow to happen. At this point, that had not happened. And so again, I think it's satisfying the need that is established right now because the school's already in place, and it's allowing for that activity to continue in that residential neighborhood. Exposing the streets to more parking, I don't think is part of a solution, although the neighbors were all willing to do that. We have to respect the reality why the restrictions are there in the first place. And so from my perspective, I just rose to note, to cite that I think all of us as a committee listened to the testimony very carefully, and it was a difficult decision. It's one of those decisions we have to be making nowadays, and it's appropriate in this instance.
Thank you. There being no other speakers, open the roll on item one, which is the Plum Committee report to deny the appeal and grant the permit for the parking lot. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved.
Madam Chair, could we consider 37A, I mean, 37 with the amendment that's before us at this time?
Sure, unless anybody has a problem with that. We had some...
We had one card in favor of it.
Yes, we have one card in favor, that's correct.
And we'd already held a public hearing, so we could...
Okay. All right, so without objection, we're on item 37.
Members of the council, 37, the amendment is what we call a cleanup amendment. When we start the process of the consolidated block grant, we don't know exactly how much money is going to be provided to us by the federal government. And in this case, there was a reduction of $204,000 on a block grant that represented close to $1 million. And so we had to take that reduction in all the proper categories and reduce the block grant. It didn't impact any individual projects that many of us have in the block grant. It took into account the reduction of the cap that has to happen because we have a limit of 25 percent, the reduction of the administrative cost because we have a limit. Now, what I want to mention to several of our members, this block grant that we're submitting also repaid some of the monies that we borrowed in the timeliness report to move some of the projects on that we were moving. And the issue that's before us in terms of the block grant is a continued threat of reduction of the human service delivery cap, and I want my colleagues to know that because this is the last block grant that I get to oversee as a council member. And the human service delivery network of the city of Los Angeles basically depends primarily on the block grant. So that is pretty much being continued. The neighborhood facilities portion has been increased. A lot of the economic development initiatives basically were curtailed to allow for that continuance of some of the other priorities. At the same time, I want my colleagues to understand that last year we introduced a whole new process, and many of you know it as the timeliness task force. And the timeliness task force is looking at projects that are ready to move, and that block grant can help move, and looking at projects that aren't moving, and basically allowing for the transfer of funds as part of the amendment process. And that is still in place. So many of you might have a project who you're saying, "How can I get it funded?" While the reality is if it's a project that's ready to move and can utilize that funds and there are monies that aren't moving, that process is continuing, and that will be part of a continued process. I just ask for unanimous vote. This is a process I start in December after the mayor basically submits a recommendation, and I need everybody to know that I think the mayor, as he's been seasoned and his staff has been seasoned, has continued to better its relationship and dialogue with the council members. And so this year, I didn't have a lot of that kind of questioning that went on. The committee reviewed it. The CLA OARS went over it. CDD, as a department, went over it. And it's not 100 percent perfect. It'll never be. And it's because we don't have enough money. But the reality, I think it's the best we can put out there right now, and I just ask for unanimous support.
We'll try here. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you. I stand to support the motion made by Mr. Hernandez. Having spoken with him, I wish to move that council file 00190 on attachment F of the OARS report not be received and filed, but taken to committee pursuant to the conversation that Mr. Hernandez and I had earlier for further review and disposition.
I have no problem with that. And there's several other projects, by the way, that I know Mr. Savornich had a project that he wanted to make sure was kept alive in the timeliness process, and we will be doing that. I think there was one also introduced by councilmember Chick.
Okay, so open the roll on item 37 as amended by both Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Ridley Thomas. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff asked till February 15th to get this to the feds, so could we move this forthwith?
I was just going to ask if you needed that forthwith. All right, forthwith on that one and on 31 as well. All right, that brings us, I believe...
Back to item number three, public hearing item.
We have two cards. First, Paul Malutus, and then Mike Stevens.
Madam Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity to give me to speak over to you. I represent the ONSAGE Homeowners Association. I'm the chairman, and my name is Paul Malutus. I have a question that puzzles my mind. If this money is allocated to purchase these properties, that means that the gradual expansion of the LAX will proceed. Therefore, I'm urging you, knowing your record and knowing how hard you had fought for the Westchester area, to not allocate that money and not let those houses be purchased. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Stevens. Mike Stevens, are you there? There you are. You're behind the post.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Madam Chair, my name is Mike Stevens, as you're aware, and I'm president of an organization, small organization called LAX Expansion Now. We are located in south-central Los Angeles, Inglewood and Lenox. But what I'd like to tell you is that there are other communities as far away as San Pedro, Rancho Palos Verdes, who are opposed to LAX expansion. What you have here today on item number three is, in fact, LAX expansion. If you take a look at this map that I have here, and if you take a look right here where my finger is, this is the property that's in question. And this is the mayor, Richard Reardon's proposal, one of four. And what it will do, it will allow LAX to expand all the way to the 405 freeway, which is right here where my finger is. Okay, Solana. All right. And to the 405 freeway, which means that it will be 1, 500 feet from residential communities which are located on this side of the freeway. One moment, please, I'm sorry.
Let me take this.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Now, this, this project, what we are proposing here today, what you are proposing here is to bring LAX, this will allow LAX to expand all the way to the 405 freeway. In reference to the motion that you have before you today, first, the motion says that they may change the zoning to PF. The motion should say, but it does not, that any change in zoning will require hearings of the zoning change amendment of the general plan and environmental documentation. So I suggest the city of Los Angeles add this language to the item. Second thing is that though agencies do this all the time, separate the approval of property purchase and deciding on the type of use, this is really segmentation of the sequel environmental review process, which says a project should be considered and evaluated as a whole. The city is purchasing, the city is purchasing, the city... Hey, Paul? It's okay. She's all right. Is purchasing this property for no other use, for no other use other than for the airport, and not to include this in the motion is segmenting the project. Moreover, any conceivable use of the airport will be a departure from the existing land use in this neighborhood and incompatible with the neighborhood. For these reasons, the mere purchase of the land has the potential for significant environmental impact, and so requires an EIR and not just a negative deck or a categorical exemption. I'd like to ask you, are there any review and comment periods over the negative declaration that has been issued? And if so, when were they? And we'd like to have some community input. Remember, this, this will allow LAX to come all the way to the 405 freeway, and Inglewood residential communities are on the other side. Many of you have not decided as of yet on LAX expansion. I would suggest that you take another look at this and delay making a decision on this project. Many families, poor families, working-class families' future are on the line based upon your decision here today. Thank you, Ms. Calanter.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. And members of the council, as the representative, can you pipe down a little over here? As the representative of the district, I'm going to ask that we refer this back to my office because this is the first time that I've heard anybody from the Osage neighborhood come and say that they were opposed to this acquisition. I just want to, you did say you were opposed to the acquisition, didn't you? Yes, that's what I thought. So I'd like to have the opportunity to review this one more time, and I commit to you it'll be back to council quickly. So if there's no objection, that's going to be referred to council district six. And that brings us to...
Item number 27 called special by councilmember Calanter.
Yes, and so, Mr. Savornich, if you would take this and call on me, I'll do my thing here.
Chair recognizes council president pro 10. Calanter.
Mrs. Chick's microphone because, oh, no, I don't need to. Hold on. I'll borrow the microphone. I can have mine, you're sitting in my chair. I didn't want to displace you. Thank you. The reason I called this special is that it's, it did not go through the Rules and Elections Committee, and so I didn't have the opportunity to ask the basic question I have there. I'm not against any of this, but I am concerned, as we're looking at proposals for increasing the public funding that will go toward election campaigns, what that's going to come out of. And I think when the council makes a decision about this, we ought to at least, hello? Excuse me, back here. We ought to at least be able to weigh the question of, I don't think you can answer this. This is not, I mean, I'm not here to try to challenge your proposal, but I do think the council ought to know if we're going to get stuck in a situation, or how likely it might be that we get stuck in a situation where we have to choose between funding political campaigns and funding neighborhood councils, or between funding political campaigns and funding police reform. And all I really want is the opportunity, it's my understanding that neither the CLA's office nor OARS has had a chance to report on this proposal. So it would seem to me that it would make sense for us to get, in addition to the Ethics Commission's proposal, some review by somebody. I don't believe it's been to the Budget Committee either. Has it?
No.
No, okay. So this has not been to any committee. Obviously, in order to be prepared for the election cycle two years away, we have to have a certain amount of lead time, and I do respect the need for that. But we still have to get through this election cycle. And so it seems to me, members of the council, that somebody from city staff, either from OARS or the CLA or both, ought to at least be asked to give us a report before we vote on it. And I'd like to have that report in conjunction with your report, unless I'm the only one who feels that way.
We're with you, Madam President.
Well, if I...
I noticed a remarkable dearth of speakers. If I might, councilmembers, just for, LeAnn Palam, executive director of the City Ethics Commission, just for a bit of background for your information as you consider these issues, the recommendations that the commission has proposed have been discussed within the context of the existing fund for the matching funds trust fund, which, as you know, the charter requires for an annual appropriation to be deposited into the trust fund for purposes only for funding the public matching funds program in the city. So based on the projections that we looked at, these recommendations are made specifically to bear in mind not exceeding the level of the trust fund. So just for background information, there would be no additional request for revenues into that trust fund to fund these changes.
Well, can I just follow up? I mean, I appreciate that, and that's very foresighted of you. But what happens if we suddenly find ourselves with, as we will every time a whole batch of seats come open, find ourselves with a lot of candidates, and quite likely, a lot of candidates who will qualify for matching funds? Aren't we obligated to take care of them all?
Yes, in fact, we are. And as you may be aware, our Ethics Commission and Miriam Krensky here, our president is here, you may also want to provide some comment. Every election cycle, the commission is required at the outset of the election, once we see how many candidates have filed papers to be on the ballot, to, in a public meeting, both in the primary election as well as in the general election, take a look at the allocation in the fund and make a determination about whether or not the fund can fully allow all candidates who might qualify for matching funds to receive the maximum amount. They have the option under the regs, if they don't believe that there is the full amount, to withhold a certain amount, which they did in 1993, because the guiding principles were that there should be enough funds for the majority or the greatest number of candidates to access, both in the primary and in the general election. So that is something that the program requires the Ethics Commission to do twice in the primary season as well as in the general.
I think it would be useful also, just for our general edification, not necessarily in terms of voting on this proposal, to get a recap from you. I know you review all this stuff yourselves, as to how much money, how much public money is spent in each election as we go forward, and particularly where there have been instances where you had to hold back money. Or the other thing that I think is interesting is that in your efforts to craft rules that'll work, you've had some real challenges. And one of the rules is that if somebody who's not taking public funds exceeds the spending limit, then everybody is entitled to more money. And if that happens, or if it happens frequently, I think it would be useful for not only the council members, but for the public to know what has been the history of this program that was adopted by a vote of the people.
Yeah, if I could also, I appreciate the fiscal concerns, and just to echo LeAnn's comments, as president of the commission, we take quite seriously the notion that there is a matching fund, we have a trust fund with $8 million in it, we essentially have our budget, and neither in enacting these proposals, which we've looked at projections we believe are fully consistent with our fund, and we're not asking for there to be any additional allocation, we take quite seriously the notion that we have a fiscal responsibility and that neither in these proposals designed to strengthen the program nor in our allocation that we made at our meeting last week for this upcoming election, which we fully expect to be a very competitive election. We have extremely strong participation in the program in this upcoming election, and we nonetheless believed, looking at a variety of models of... variety of models of potential spending, that the funds in the program were ample to cover this upcoming election, and by virtue of that, we decided to make full allocation. But we do appreciate the fact that we're provided, the commission is provided with a role, and we're sort of the check in the system. If at any time, through this proposal or any other proposal, the funds aren't there to be able to match everyone who opts into the system voluntarily, then we have the ability to decide not to allocate in full. So we sort of have our ability to tighten the purse strings if that should become necessary in any future year, and I can assure you that we take that responsibility quite seriously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sierkowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no problem and agree that it's probably worthwhile to have this, have Oars or the CLA look at it, not necessarily, well, not only to look at the potential longer-term implication, but to get more full exposure to the issue of what has been the past experience. And I think that in 1998, you did do a report about four election cycles and what had worked. And so I think some of these recommendations are really to increase that. But what I, what I would like to see is a little bit more information about, as we enhance it, is your expectation, what percentage of candidates are now availing themselves of this process, what or not? And is the enhancement meant to further encourage an increase that to as close to 100% as I guess we could achieve, which is what you really would like to achieve? And so I think that kind of discussion and focus on it will be healthy to see. I know that some changes were made in the initial draft to incorporate some things that made sense. One, now, I think Mr. Pacheco was just talking about the relative inconsistency of the time in which a candidate can raise money, but a lesser time in which the matching funds are available. And there was an inconsistency there that made no sense, and I think that's been changed. So I think a lot of what is recommended in here is good, but let's look and see the long-term implications in terms of how we are achieving more candidates availing themselves of this opportunity, as well as the long-term impact on the budgeting, on the trust fund. As it would increase and as we might increase the rate and proportion of spending, is that going to have, down the line with a very successful multiple candidate, multiple race election, is that going to have impact on the budget? Are we, or are we adequately preparing the budgetary side for the hopeful increase in the candidates who are going to avail themselves of the program? So I think it's a, it's a very, very good recommendation. I think it can go into effect well in advance of a two-year, election cycle two years from now. But I think the increased review of it and answering some of those questions would be useful.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Fuer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm glad that Ms. Galanter raised the issue about whether anything in this proposal could take away funds from other vital city services, because it enables the commission staff and leadership to disabuse the public of a notion that even at least one major candidate is promoting. And that is, excuse me, one second, please? And that is that somehow, by providing matching funds, city services are being sacrificed. Let's be very clear. The voters enacted an amendment to the charter that requires the city to contribute a like amount, every, I think, $2 million into a trust fund, and that money can't be spent for anything else. Nor are we infusing additional money beyond that into the trust fund. It's a fund. It can't be spent for anything else. The voters wanted it. Why did they want it? Because they wanted to make elections more competitive. They wanted to assure that incumbents don't have unfair advantages, that challengers have the ability to compete. They wanted to be sure that people with a lot of money didn't win automatically because they have a lot of money. So here we have a proposal which further promotes the same goals motivating the electorate when we enacted these changes in the first place. It says that challengers need to be able to compete. Let's increase the available match to them from a timing standpoint so that they're viable sooner. And it says something to all of us who are incumbents. It says, rather than having to devote so much time to fundraising, if you increase the pace at which matching funds are available, perhaps we can devote more time to the work we were elected to perform while we are both incumbents and running for either the office we occupy or for a different office. Those are good things. And the proposal compresses the period in which the campaign would be conducted, which also would be merciful from the standpoint of many of us have been campaigning for a long time. Obviously, there is a desire from the president and from others that there be an additional report provided to the council. The report is going to verify what we just discussed. There's nothing else to say. It's fine if that report comes forward. I would just urge that, as it does, kind of memorializing in writing what we know to be the case, that we do so quickly because the otherwise candidates for city council, say, in two years, will be thinking that April 10th is the starting date for fundraising. And under this proposal, it would not be.
Right.
So we have to hurry the pace up, get the council information it needs. If it comes to budget, fine, I'll waive it, because there's no budgetary implication from this whatsoever.
Well, as long as everybody's convinced there's no budgetary implications, then I'm not concerned about it. But that's what I wanted to be sure of. Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, this program has always been of great interest to me because without it, I wouldn't be here. And I also realize by making that comment, it probably put the program in jeopardy. But one of the things to which I wanted to clarify is that there's so much money in the trust fund every election cycle. I would assume that in years where the three citywide offices are up, plus half of the council, the expenditures out of the matching funds trust are more than just when half of the council is up. The one issue to which I wanted to make sure that there could possibly, or there may be safeguards in place, in the years when, like this year, when you have the three citywide races and half of the council up, when the expenditures out of the matching funds program goes up, and especially when you have the high-profile mayoral races, city attorney races, controllers' races, then the council, a couple of high-profile council races, you know, what I want to make sure is that historically, has not the matching funds program participants received their funds on a first-come, first-served basis? Or are there projections made prior to that election cycle that says, okay, we know that we're going to have maybe a half a dozen mayoral candidates, two or three city attorney candidates, a couple of controller candidates, that are all going to be big-money matching participants? So then council candidates who are slow on the draw, let's say, to get in their request could find themselves not being funded because we deplete the proportion of matching funds or of all of them that we've set aside for that race. And I know $8 million is a lot of money to have in the trust, and I know that historically we've never even approached distributing that amount of money in the matching funds program. And so by charter, since it's an $8 million trust fund, is it conceivable that we could deplete the entire trust fund, let's say if we got into a really expensive series of campaigns one year, indeed that it is a first-come, first-served matching funds program? So if a mayoral candidate tapped out all the money that they wanted, or you had a bunch of them tap out, would it deny candidates running for council offices, let's say, to get the money? I just want to make sure, is there enough money in the trust fund now in the foreseeable future that everyone who wanted to participate could participate even in a busy matching funds year?
Yes, and again, based on the projections that we made for this election cycle, which, as you know, is an extraordinarily busy election cycle for the city, based on past experience and the numbers that we've actually seen candidates receive when there are so many candidates in the field, the commission acted to leave the allocation at 100%. So we do anticipate the candidates who are able to fully max out will be able to do so in this election cycle. For historical perspective, in 1993, I mentioned earlier, the commission at that point, again, a comparable year, election year to this one, with so many candidates, open seats in the mayoral race and so forth, and a number of viable candidates, the commission did withhold funding at about 50% in the first go-around early in the election. In the end, all candidates were entitled to receive the maximum amount that they could become eligible to receive at that point. So they did have the opportunity then. And again, just in terms of the money for perspective, that candidates became eligible to receive in 1993, I think the total was about $5.1 million in that very busy election year.
Out of the $8 million that was allocated?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if I could maybe add to that, when we decided for this election to allocate 100% of our funds, we didn't do it with our eyes closed or on a hope and a whim that there would be enough money. I think it would be irresponsible of your commissioners to do that. We looked at projections, some more conservative than others, in regard to, given the number of candidates and those who are participating in the race, and making assumptions as to how many would completely max out, how many wouldn't, would we have the money, not simply for this race, but for future races?
Sure.
The voters have entrusted us with $2 million a year to be used solely for your matching fund program. And the question in our mind, with our $8 million that have now, has now risen to over $9 million through interest it's accrued, what's the most responsible and appropriate way to make use of the matching fund and the money that voters have entrusted to us to achieve the kind of open competitive races that the voters sought to bring about? So when we looked at these proposals, and when we looked at allocating for this race, I think we did so in a very conservative way. There were more aggressive proposals that were brought to us, things that would have looked at a three-to-one match, things that would have looked at increasing even further the amount of money people could receive. And we rejected those in part because we wanted to be sure that all of this could be accomplished within the budget that we have. We're not asking for further allocations, and none of us, this was unanimously approved after over a year's worth of public hearings, no one on the commission entered into it with any queasiness that we would deplete the fund in a way that would do disservice to future candidates.
My only comment is, it's, it's good to hear that everybody can participate if they want to, because that multiples of hundreds of thousands of dollars to the citywide candidates, those amounts of money are important to them, but equally so, the tens of thousands of dollars or less to council candidates proportionally is just as important to them if they want to be successful or attempt to be successful, so.
And, and the system has within it the safety net that at every election, before the general and before the primary elections, your commission has to decide whether we have the money for full allocation. So we have that safety net built in. This really shouldn't occasion any money. It doesn't have that within it.
I think you made that actually very clear.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay, Mr. Fuer.
Madam President, taking into account your concerns, but also, I think I heard you say something else a moment ago, since as the Budget Chair, I would waive this item.
Yeah, I let it go.
I was going to just ask that we move forward on the matter as presented today.
Yes, I certainly, on the basis of the assurance that you've made a couple of times here, and I heard you every single time, I have no objection to that. Okay, item 27 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Fourth with on that, I think you probably need that.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Wait, can I ask for one before we do that, Mike?
Sure.
We do have special two that's circulating right now, and I actually have to leave for about 20 minutes and then come back. Special two is what we used to call a friendly Prop 5. And so it involves refinancing water bonds in order to take advantage of lower interest rates. And so if there is no strenuous objection, I'd like to ask that we take up special two. And I've now done the whole explanation. You have to do the suspension of the rules problem.
Well, in terms of bringing it in special, the council just needs to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and that there's an immediate need to act. The DWP Commission acted this morning, and in order to go ahead and fund this, they would have to do this immediately to take advantage of the financial situations.
All right, open the roll on the findings, special two, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Open the roll on special two. Well, does anybody else want to say anything? Open the roll on special two.
I think, yeah, now you're going to take the vote on the motion itself.
The motion itself. That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Don't interrupt me. I'm going to have it done in a second.
I'm sorry.
Open the roll on special two, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, that's approved. Fourth with on that. Thank you. Now, Mr. Hernandez had a request.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just would ask for suspension of the rules to allow for a three-minute presentation for the citizens' unit on participation. They had filled out a card on item 37, they were in support of it, but I wanted them to be able to make a presentation. There's a booklet on your desk that explains the results of their survey, and every council office has a representative on this unit, and they'd been out in all the CIPAs and talking to folks, and looking at the results of the survey, I found it very interesting, and I just would ask that we give them an opportunity to make a three-minute presentation through the full council.
All right, is there any objection? This is, I looked at this book, and this is a really impressive survey they've got there. All right, without objection, then we're going to actually run the timer on you. It'll be a new experience for you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez, and thank you to the council for allowing us to do this briefly. We won't take more than three minutes of your time, but we just wanted to draw your attention to the booklet that's been handed out. We know the consolidated plan has been approved, and we did, as a board, endorse the consolidated plan, but there were a couple of things that we wanted to point out. This report before you was a result of CUP board members, and as Councilman Hernandez said, most council people do have a representative on the board going out into the communities to festivals, to fairs, anywhere where we thought more than 100 people would be practically, and asking them to rank the needs of their communities as they saw them. We sort of thought, we had this crazy notion that if we were spending community development money, maybe we should figure out how communities, how people in those communities want to see them developed. So we asked over 3,000 people, one by one, form by form, ranking by ranking, to take 28 different needs in their communities and rank them. And all 28 are very popular. It wasn't like there were some easy ones and hard ones, they were all hard, and people said to us over and over again, how do we rank these things? And we said, well, this is the hard part about decision-making. They did rank them, and we came out with a number of interesting findings. One of the things we found is that housing is, came out far and away, number one, and not just affordable housing, but every single housing thing we asked about showed up very strongly in this survey. The second thing that we found was interesting was children, youth, and family issues, people-related issues, tended to show up more strongly than infrastructure issues and sort of neighborhood issues. And so we really found that striking, that people really wanted to sort of help their less fortunate neighbors first. And the other thing that we sort of, that struck us was that this is really an interesting ranking of a lot of issues that people care about that really aren't specifically related to CDBG funding. We happen to be a board that's related to CDBG funding, but the people answering the survey don't know that. All they know is that they're ranking what they think their communities need. So we really encourage you as a council that as you're going forward with the budget process, which is just now starting, and some other processes that you do, you don't think of this report as just a consolidated plan CDBG-related report, but that you see it as something that can really inform a lot of the decisions that have to be made, the tough decisions that have to be made about priority ranking. Say that again? Oh, and I think that's it. I never, I'm Glenn Gritsner, by the way, I'm the member-at-large and CD5 representative. This is Peter Lassen from Councilman Hernandez's office. I didn't introduce us because I felt so pressured for time. So thank you very much for indulging us, and also, this is sort of our yearly raising of our hand to say, we're still here and we're still working hard, and we're still really taking our role seriously to get community input into the consolidated plan. And as you can see by the data on the report, this was completed in September 2000, the mayor's office saw it very early, so we've been trying to be, we've been trying to be a part of this process forward. And you will see a newer, better, and more extensive one of these next year in whatever office you happen to hold. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Extensive.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I do encourage everybody to look at the, particularly the rating of all issues. What I found interesting is the number one issue that emerged is affordable housing by far. And then the second issue was enforcement of housing laws. I think it's important that we look at this because as we deal with the issues that affect us, this was a process that went out into neighborhoods and surveyed people, and I just found, again, the results very interesting. When they were rating neighborhood issues, street repairs was above neighborhood parks. And normally, that wasn't the case in the past. So again, it gives us a feel of some of the things that are going on in neighborhoods, and some of the concerns that are being expressed in terms of the quality of life, and I just encourage everybody to take the time to look at the study.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Councilmen. The Chair, oh, the Chair would like to move to the next item. Yeah, the Chair's, Chair is here.
The next item is 28C, called special by Councilmember Walters.
Ah, there we go. Councilwoman, item 28C, called special by you?
Yes. I called 28C special, council members, because this is an event to be held at the Biltmore Hotel. It's the Grammy Awards, their own party, to which It's the Grammy Awards, their own party, to which the public is not invited, and we're going to spend over $47,000 to allow them to have a private party in my district. I am opposed to this, I would hope that you would oppose it as well. I would much rather see the money go for a lot of other things that we're raking and scraping, trying to find money for, and I think this is money that should never be allocated by a public body to a private event.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other council member that wishes to be heard on this item? The Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Members of the council, I can appreciate Ms. Walters' concerns, and when she talks about her district, she's talking about downtown LA. I think, again, we were able to witness New Year's celebrations throughout the world, and some of us questioned what happened to LA when you look at what they do in New York and what they do in other cities. The Grammys is one of the events that now is identified with Los Angeles, and the fact of the matter is that we had lost them one year and we got them back. From my perspective, when you're promoting our city, there's no question in my mind that this is one of the events that does that. And I just asked for an aye vote of the motion that was introduced by Councilmember Ferraro, and I look at it as not only a one-night event, but part of the economic development strategy of a city as a whole in a region that basically promotes the entertainment industry.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on this item? If not, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Nine ayes, one no.
That item is approved. There's been a request by Councilman Pacheco that we take Special 1 out of order and consider it at this time. Is there any objection by any council member that we do that? And I'll allow you all a moment to see whether or not you want to object or not. Any objection, council?
What is that?
Okay, seeing no objections. Special 1 is now before us at this time. I believe we need to make the findings. Madam City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a return of reap money because CD13 was just notified, and this is a motion by Mr. Pacheco, but this is, CD13 was just notified that they need to assist, that there needs to be assistance with relocation of three tenants in an untenable building, and housing is verified that this needs to be done immediately.
Okay.
Therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act.
Okay, first, let's vote on the findings. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on the findings and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Okay, the item is now before us. Mr. Pacheco? The item is before us. Move approval?
Move approval.
Okay. We do have two speakers' cards that we will ask them to speak before we take a vote. Cynthia Wells and Deborah Campbell.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Ladies, are you in favor?
Yes.
You're in favor of the action?
Yes.
Okay.
The property at 1305 Waterloo is draining its sewage through my property, my neighbor's property, and one other property next to her. This has been going on for two years. I have standing water in my backyard, and my retaining wall is seriously stressed. You can walk back there at times, you literally want to retch, and it's just an unacceptable situation. This is not the only problem with this property. I have called the police many times about bottles being thrown from this property. One time I found over 30 bottles in my backyard that had been hailed down on us. My sliding glass window's been broken, my garden umbrella's been torn, they throw bottles, they throw rocks the size of a man's fist, larger than that, and we have a whole collection of items. My neighbor has been hit in the head and bloodied, and he went up and asked them to stop it, and they just kowtow and say, oh, no, we won't do it again, and of course, the next day it's happening. Sometimes I'm calling the police two and three times a week on this. Well, I could go on and on, but I did email you each letters detailing this, so that's all I want to say on that, and please take care of this problem for us.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was excused until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere. This chick was exceded until 10:30. She'll probably be right on time. All right. Is that it? Or we're still one short? Three? Nope, we're still one short. We're too short of a quorum. Mr. Holden is on his way. Mr. Ridley Thomas is in the building somewhere.[1793.97] All right, we do not have any cards on item number one, so the public hearing will be closed. Members of the council, item one. Cindy.
Members of council, this is a planning and land use management committee report on an appeal. It was a nuisance abatement appeal at a printing company, and the issue was really one of deliveries. I think the committee recommended to deny the appeal in part, modify a delivery time and schedule and use of a back road, and that was generally acceptable to the community, the council office, and the applicant. So I moved the planning and land use management committee report.
All right, thank you. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved. Next item.
Item number two is also a planning land use management committee report.
Yes, and we do have several, two people who've asked to be heard on this, so we will start the public hearing with Mr. DeVal from the Community Coalition, and then hear from Mr. Pettis of the Payless Market.
Council President, members of the council, my name is Joseph DeVal from the Community Coalition located 8101 South Vermont Avenue. I have with me four residents from the Western Slauson area who live in close proximity to Payless Market, and who have been dealing with this problem for at least six years, if not longer. And they've consistently observed, you know, nuisance activities such as loitering, public drinking, so forth and so on, and would raise concern, and wanted to raise their concerns with the 90-day revision in the conditions for the security guard. The problems that they've been dealing with have existed for a number of years, and they spend an invaluable amount of time and energy documenting the problem and attending hearings. And this, for them, this raises concerns about the quality of life, this only 90-day period of time. So we would like to ask for the six months with period of time, and the hours would remain the same. The hours would be fine with us, so.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for coming. Mr. Pettis.
My name is Cornelius Pettis with Payless Market. I'd like to submit to file one, the first thing would be a transcript from the January 30 of 2001 Plum Meeting. The second would be letters hand-delivered to the council members yesterday. And the third would be a petition with over 700 signatures from patrons who live within walking distance of the store. We submitted to file on October 16, 1998, there was a gentleman's agreement between the Board of Zoning Appeals and Payless Market. Mr. Dole stated that voting against the appellant, the appellant has the opportunity to show in 120 days to the zoning administrator by whatever evidence, correction, then this hour restriction can be removed. Payless Market has been in compliance for the last two and a half years, and yet that restriction has not been removed. The initial allegations which brought this before to City Council, the initial allegations were illegal drug activity, drinking in public, prostitution, loitering, and urination and defecation. We identified each of these allegations. On the illegal drug activity, the location was one block from the market. The police would not give us the address. The action taken on that was the police advised me of the activity, and it was referred to vice. On the drinking in public, the police came in, they cited the violators. That does not exist. We had posted signs prohibiting the activity. The issue of prostitution, we identified that as being at the Galaxy Motel at 5602 Southwestern, and also at the Y-Tail Motel at 5501 Southwestern. The action taken on this item was the police advised me of the activity, and it was referred to vice. On the issue of loitering, the police cited the violators. They posted signs prohibiting activity. That has assisted to end the case. On the issue of urination and defecation, the address was 5718 Western. We called the council office, Animal Regulation, Health Department, and the property owner himself. This was coming from a vacant lot which had four dogs living there. On page three, which we submitted to file, we had a positive staff report by zoning analyst Ralph Avala. This is when the zoning analyst came to the market. He checked every item, and every item was positive. Page number eight there of May 24, 2000, Captain Runyon, commanding officer, 77th Street Division, stated Payless Market is in compliance. November 3, 2000, Captain Runyon invited Payless Market to attend the standardized training for alcohol retailers, which we did. November 29, 2000, Captain Runyon invited Payless Market to become a member of the Community Police Advisory Board, which we agreed to. December 22, 2000, Police Chief Bernard Park writes, "Crime Statistics for Your Business Area," and indicated that the statistics were not for my business. July 19, 99, there's a document in the file from the Public Safety Committee, and it states, "You can't, you just can't use the PACMS report. You have to have redacted arrest and crime materials." Document number two in the file is April 6, 1999. It's a special order number 11 from Chief Parks, and it says, "The Bureau Commanding Officer shall ensure a copy of the citywide nuisance abatement problem, property referral, supporting documentation, and follow-up investigative documentation is forwarded to either the city attorney for abatement or the zoning administrator, Department of Planning, for CUP review or nuisance review process." Document number three is March 19, 99. This is the Los Angeles Board of Police Commissioners Management Audit. "The need for nuisance abatement action shall be well articulated, well researched, and firmly based in evidence of a community nuisance, and when all other methods of voluntary compliance have failed." Document number four is June 11, 1998. It's a memorandum two from Chief of Police. It says that "Area commanding officers shall ensure that officers assigned to testify at a CUP hearing are familiar with all pertinent issues associated with the location in question, that they can address those issues in a fair and objective manner." Document four. "The zoning administrator, at all stages have these administrative hearings, including the most recent Plum Committee hearing. The LAPD violated the directives requiring that the evidence and testimony must be well researched and firmly based on facts. The zoning administrator, Board of Appeals, and Plum Committee chose to rely on obviously unreliable information, ignoring all of the favorable evidence presented on my behalf by individuals who patronize my store on a daily basis. I would ask that the Plum Committee please reconsider its recommendation to deny my appeal, and that the City Council grant my appeal of the zoning administrator and Board of Zoning Appeal decision. The zoning administrator, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Plum Committee primarily relied upon the unsubstantiated testimony of the officers in imposing the added condition of costly security and denying my appeals at each of the hearings. At no time have the officers presented any backup documentation which would substantiate all of their allegations, or which would show a proper nexus between the operation of my business and the alleged crimes and loitering on the public sidewalk for which I'm being blamed." Councilman Bernson suggested another plan review. We have gone to plan reviews for two and a half years. These hearings are extremely expensive, and what will happen if I get a security guard, which I cannot afford, they will say that the improvement is because of the security guard, and they will not delete the condition. If I don't get a security guard, they can close me down for noncompliance. I'm right, I'm just caught right in the middle of that. Council Bernson stated that the new cases that have been filed by the ACLU, neither the security guards or the police can remove the loiteries. A security guard is not the answer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pettis. All right, Mr. Ridley Thomas, this is in your district, and you've heard both the owners' concerns and the Community Coalition's concerns, and I trust you're going to offer us some guidance.
I trust that I can. We've given this considerable thought and review. Everyone here knows that we take the issue of land use very seriously. The question of those that are nuisances that graduate to issues that are of a criminal nature, as has been documented, are of particular concern to us. Regrettably, we find those to be centered around that which we describe as liquor stores and other uses. I take note of the fact, after having spoken with Mr. Pettis and key members of his family, he's brought his mother, that he wishes to be a constructive force in our community. The evidence at this point in time contradicts a pattern that would say that things are as they ought to be at that particular site. Data from the Police Department, the Planning Department, the observations of neighbors and the Community Coalition make that rather clear. Therefore, I think Plum has acted responsibly, and I think the committee ought to be, the council ought to be governed by the recommendation before us.
All right. In summary, I believe Mr. Ridley Thomas is moving item two. Anybody else? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, that's approved.
Forthwith.
Forthwith on item two. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items three through 13.
All right, we do have cards on items five and six for which hearings have already been held, but, so unless there's a motion, we're not going to reopen the hearings, or we're not going to hold another hearing. Do we have any specials? Members of the council, three through 13. Ms. Walters calls 13 special.
And 11.
And 11.
Seven special, please.
Mr. Padilla calls seven special. Anybody else? Mr. Hernandez?
I want to call six special. I understand there's cards on it.
Okay, item six is called special. Anybody else? That leaves us items four, five, eight, nine, 10, and 12. Open the roll on items four, five, eight, nine, 10, and 12. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, those are approved. Forthwith on item 10, please. And the ordinance on item three goes over one week. All right, next.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 14 through 39.
All right, well, we've done 14, and we've taken, 17, 20, and 23 are received and filed. We do not have any cards on any of these, interestingly enough. Any specials, members of the council? 15 through, sorry, yeah, 15 through 39. Mr. Fuhr calls 38 special. Anybody else? Okay, open the roll on items 15, 16, 18, 19, 21, 22, and 24 through 37 and 39. I'm sorry, I hear another one. Ms. Walters calls 26 special.
And Madam President, there is a 15A, which is a substitute motion.
All right, let's take 15 out of this list, then we'll take care of that in a minute.
Madam Chair, on item 34, are we that far? Yeah.
Yeah.
I needed that item continued for two weeks, and I'd like staff to come to my office.
All right.
Both General Services and Public Works. From my understanding, it hasn't gone through the process, but they're asking for a lease.
All right, so you want two weeks in the file referred to your office?
Yeah, and I'd like to instruct staff to come, yeah, to my office.
Okay, that's item 34.
34.
34, all right. Item 34 will be referred to Mr. Hernandez. Okay, try again. 15, 16, I'm sorry, 15 is the one with the amending motion. 16, 18, 19, 21, 22, 24, 25, 27 through 33, and 35 through 37, and 39. Open the roll.
No, David Marcus.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, those are approved. The ordinance in 16 goes over one week, and forthwith on 33. And that brings us to the closed session items. We'll hold on the desk, and we'll go back to.
Item number five would be the next item.
Six.
Item six. I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez, you called item six special.
Right, Madam Chair. I just wanted the Planning Department to come up. There was basically, was there some cards filled out for item six?
There are, there are three cards all in opposition, and there has been a public hearing. If you want to hold another one, make that motion.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to hear from the parties.
Okay, can we put a time limit on it?
Yeah, three cards, how about five minutes?
Okay. Is there any objection to a five-minute public hearing on item six? You want, let's have the staff report. Mike? You want the staff report first?
Staff report, and then.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the City Council. Terry Speth from the City Planning Department, Community Planning Division. There is an ordinance in effect since the 14th of last month, creating a pedestrian overlay district in the Atwater Village area. The boundaries, what we brought to you last week is a correction ordinance that simply makes the text of the boundaries match the map, which was adopted by the council on November 29. The map that you approved on November 29 is consistent with the original motion to do the pedestrian overlay district, which was introduced in 1994, and it is consistent with the legislative action throughout the course of the adoption process.
Can we have some of the staff discussions disappear off? Gentlemen, can you just go a little farther over? It's hard to hear here. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And so what we are bringing is what we consider a minor technical correction to the ordinance number 173676, and we'll be happy to answer any questions we have. We understand that there are folks here who have indicated that this would create some difficulties with a project that they have in the works.
All right, thank you. So just so we're clear, what's being changed in this correction is the text to match the map.
A couple of words, a couple of words in the text.
Right, but it's not the map being changed to match the text. It's the text change.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, now, we're ready for the public hearing? Okay. We'll hear from Ralph Horowitz, Larry Warchell, and Jerry Garner, in that order. Mr. Horowitz. Oh, I'm sorry, could you go to the other podium? The mic's on over on this side. Thank you, go ahead.
Mr. Warchell and I own a 25-acre shopping center. Our tenants are Costco, Toys, and Best Buy. The shopping center has a depth of approximately 1,000 feet. Section 4A2 of the new overlay ordinance says that any buildings, any new buildings have to be located within five feet of the street. I have previously submitted a letter to the council showing that the highest point on our property, which is the east side, is 25 feet above street level. Maintaining an adequate slope means it is impossible for us to build buildings within five feet of the curb level. The ordinance requires that every building have a ground floor no more than three feet above curb level. As I just indicated.
Excuse me, one second. Ms. Walters?
The gentleman at the table is not a staff person, as I understand.
Terry Speck, who works for the Planning Department.
Okay.
He is a staff member, yes.
Yes, that's fine.
The gentleman speaking at the public hearing is not a staff member. The gentleman at the table is.
He's a very, he's a very good staff member, too.
All right, wait. Hold on here. No, 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 come on, guys. We're in the middle of Mr. Horowitz's time here. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
As I indicated, the ordinance requires every building to have a ground floor, and the ground floor be at least no more than, excuse me, no more than three feet above curb level. The topography of our property starts at 25 feet above curb level and slants down to a low of about curb level. This property was recently entitled by this organization, and our plan, our grading plan was approved by the City of Los Angeles. It also says that all parking spaces above grade shall be architecturally hidden from the street. We have a 25-acre shopping center with 20 acres of parking, with minimum view windows to our rear buildings, which is the Costco, the Toys... to our rear buildings, which is the Costco, the Toys, and the Best Buy. And now they say they want us to shield, this ordinance would require walls or shielding to the back buildings. This ordinance was intended for a small storefront area where all the projects have depths of 125 feet and are, and the buildings are right up to the curb. We are the only shopping center in the area, and this ordinance was not intended to cover our project. And in fact, let me conclude by saying, we hadn't attended any public hearings because Councilwoman Goldberg had indicated to us strongly that we were not included in the, in the, in the district, and that wording of the, and the wording of the ordinance itself specifically excludes us. So we never attended any public hearings to point out the inconsistencies between the overlay and the CUP conditions on our shopping center. And in fact, to comply with these conditions would put us in breach with all three major tenants in the rear.
All right, it sounds to me as if what we need to do is clarify as soon as we finish the public hearing, whether your property is in fact grandfathered or excluded, and we will certainly do that. Let's finish the public hearing.
My name's Larry Warchell. Mr. Horowitz covered most of the issues. We, when we entitled this project, we agreed to 58 specific conditions. Many of them covered the front of the property to make it as pedestrian-friendly as we could, given the limitations of the site. We have sent to the file a letter dated January 31st, which was last week's hearing on this matter, from council, former council member Goldberg, stating that it was not a mistake excluding us from the overlay district. It was her intention to exclude us from the overlay district. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Garner?
My name is Jerry Garner. I won't cover anything that's already been said, but it is our understanding up until about a week ago that we were excluded, so we didn't take part in the Plum hearings or the planning commission hearings. Our project is special, and because it's special, and because we spent a year and a half with the planning commission, the city staff, and the community in designing it and working out the 58 conditions of approval that deal with all the issues particular to our site, it made sense that it was not included in the Atwater overlay. So if the council feels, we contend strongly that the text of the ordinance is correct and the map is in error. If the council feels that it's uncomfortable or doesn't have enough information to approve this change, we don't want the council to approve the change. What we really want to do, if we can't get the, the text of the ordinance left alone to exclude us, then we think we should be sent back to the planning commission so we can have our chance to put our input into it and negotiate the issues with the planning staff and the planning commission. This letter from Mr. Horowitz, I'd like to have in the file for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and Mr. Hernandez wants to say something, and then Ms. Zakowski does, but I think we need to clarify whether, whether the changes in the text are changing what they're worried about.
Right, Madam Chair, what I wanted to do was move that we send this back to Plum, and that we try and clarify that at the Plum level. And I want to read a letter dated January 31st, because I'm not taking a position on this, but I think when I received the letter, it surprised me. And basically, it is written by now Assemblymember Jackie Goldberg, and it says, "Dear colleagues, the planning and zoning approvals of the former Franciscan Pottery site were coordinated through my council office. Numerous public meetings were held over an extended period of time. The developer presented his plans for the Franciscan Metro Center. The community examined the project in depth and presented objections, comments, and preferences as to the size and use. The zoning conditions set forth in the approved conditional use permit for the Franciscan Metro Center were negotiated and incorporated the planning commission and many of the community's comments. The zoning and conditional use permit for the Franciscan Metro Center was agreed to by most community and adopted by the planning commission and the city council. My office is, was well underway in proposing the pedestrian overlay ordinance for Atwater Village as pedestrian-oriented district in portions of the northeast Los Angeles community plan area. I would like you to know that the Franciscan Metro Center project was exempt from this proposed ordinance because of the CUP and zoning already underway. The Franciscan Metro Center will have no drive-through uses at any time. It was always understood that the Franciscan Metro Center would be a regional destination shopping center, which would forever be controlled by stringent and comprehensive conditional use permit. My council office worked hard to develop the pedestrian ordinance, overlay ordinance. I believe its adoption is critical not only to the Atwater Village residents and business, but will also be useful in many other parts of the city of Los Angeles. But I do not believe it is appropriate to include the Franciscan Metro Center in the pedestrian overlay ordinance for Atwater Village. Thank you for considering this additional bit of information and history." Now, I wanted to read the letter because she wrote me a letter, and that's what the letter says. And I understand what the planning staff is saying, and I also am listening to what the developer-owner is saying. And I think that there is some miscommunication going on here, and we want to clear that up. And hopefully, there can be some understanding, but I, when the developer says he was under the impression they were exempt from this ordinance, and that's why they did not participate in the process and interact, this letter kind of confirms that. And I think we should give them the opportunity to interact before we basically implement the language that's before us at this time.
All right.
Doesn't mean I'm going to change it, it just means I think that we should have that dialogue, and that's why my motion would be to send it back to Plum and for us to reconsider.
All right, thank you. Ms. Zakowski?
I, I don't object to Mr. Hernandez's recommendation to send it back to Plum, but since this was continued last week, I did do some of the research on this, and in fact, met with Mr. Speth in my office and Dan Green, who is the zoning administrator for the conditional use, to say, is there anything incompatible with the conditional use for this property and the specific plan? And both planners, the planner who approved this project and the planners who are working on the plan, say it is not inconsistent, and they both recommended that it be part of the plan so that in the future, as new development goes forward, it would be governed by that that is essentially in, in common. However, inasmuch as there is some confusion on the part of the applicant, the developer, that additional time may be appropriate. For instance, he indicated that all, all parking has to be screened. That's not the case. It says all above-grade parking spaces, that is, parking in a structure, has to be screened, and we do that in every pedestrian-oriented district. In a surface area, all they have to have is a wall three feet high so that you don't have the car fronts right on the curb face. You have a three-foot wall and landscaping. So I think all of that is, is fine, is compatible. There's nothing that is not grandfathered by the existing buildings, but even if there were ever to be new attempts to develop the frontage of that property, it should be governed by the specific plan, which would then put in place the style, the aesthetics, the symmetry of the rest of the area, both in, for future development on this property, as well as future development, years in the future on this property if this developer's no longer there. I think that that is what makes sense, but I have no problem with coming back to the planning committee to have those two things integrated, because I think when an, an effort is made to look and see how integratable they are and how in common they are, it does make sense to not leave this hole in the Atwater pedestrian-oriented specific plan, but to have it continuous through everything. So sending it back to committee and see if we can talk with Mr. Burnson about having it scheduled quickly to come back to council.
All right, thank you. Yes, and I would like to, having listened to all of this, say, I agree with both of you. I think this needs to be clarified so that not only the council and the residents, but also the property owners have a, all have a clear and common understanding of what's, what's in this and not. So without objection, that will be, item six is referred back to the planning committee, and we are ready to move to item seven, called special by Mr. Padilla. Mr. Padilla, you called item seven special? Please, please push your little button there. Nope. I'm sorry, did you call it special? I thought he did.
Mr. Padilla did. Mr. Padilla called it special for?
Mr. Pacheco.
For the other Padilla. That would be Mr. Pacheco. Simply wanted to have the property from my district, CD-14, removed from the list, and that would be the motion I would be making at this point.
Okay.
There's a certain number of lots in CD-14 I would like not to go on the auction block at this point.
All right, now, what that does, yes, that probably requires that the ordinance then has to be amended and goes back onto a first reading. So let's hold on and see what else we've got here. Mr. Savornich?
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to rise, items five, items five and six of the committee report are located in my district, and I'd like them to go back to committee for reevaluation.
All right, it looks like item seven is in deep trouble here. We have, we, Mr. Hernandez, did you want to add something to that?
Well, this is going to be continued, Madam Chair. I just would ask the department to come and talk to my office in regards to the item in my district. I basically know it's a, it's a lot that the city should sell. I'm concerned of what, what it's sold for, and so maybe we could have some dialogue in that regard while we go through this process.
All right, so item seven will be referred back to, which committee does that go to?
Madam President, that would be my committee, ITGS.
Public Works Committee?
Apologize to my colleagues. My understanding was the department had briefed each of the council offices. That's clearly not the case today, so we'll put it back on the next committee agenda and get it back to the council as quickly as possible.
Splendid, thank you. Item seven, is that what it was? Item seven is referred to the Public Works Committee. ITGS, sorry, I don't know why it's, all right, never mind. Send it to ITGS, I don't care. All right, item 11, called special by Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam President. I know that this is a note-and-file item, but given the occurrences of the past few days, I just wonder if we should not engage in some, a little more in-depth discussion of it here, because it seems to me that the action of the mayor is going to irreparably harm this consent decree, the, the ability of the city to respond to this consent decree. And I would like to hear from the CLA on it. I'd like to, I'd like for the council itself to see if they feel the same way I do, and if they do, where do we go from here?
All right, is, Mr. Deaton? Ms. Walters would like to hear from you with respect to item 11, and I will ask her to ask you the question again, if you'd like.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Deaton, I ask whether or not the actions of the mayor the last few-day Monday is going to irreparably harm the implementation of this consent decree.
Well, I, the, I think the implementation is really up to the mayor and the council as it relates to, once we have a consent decree. The status right now, of course, the judge has not signed the consent decree, and we're still in process of people intervening and getting together with the, the judge to make sure he has some questions, and we're still working through that process. So we are proceeding with the implementation. One, the, in the most, the near-term issues are teams, too, and we're meeting constantly on that and working with the contractor to get that on going, and then we are working with the police department on the budgetary requirements in order to implement the consent decree. The, the issues that are actually before the, if you will, the consent decree implementation really are the, the main issues are getting, resolving the problems with whatever the judge wants to get information that he wants before he signs it, and then also the selection of the monitor.
And the selection of the monitor is still an unresolved issue, correct?
Right, the monitor, we have several proposals that we're, city staff is reviewing the proposals, and then we will be in the process of interviewing prospective monitors the latter part of this month.
That has been a sticking point with the mayor and the mayor's office, is that correct?
The?
Maybe I should say, do we have agreement on the process from the mayor?
So far, we are, no, we have a total agreement of all city, everybody involved in it, and in the process thus far. We haven't, obviously, the, the, the council took an action that my office and the mayor's office would report back with a contract based on our evaluations of the monitor, and so we, the process is moving forward at this point.
I, my question to the council members, Madam President, is where we go from here?
Three people who would like to try to answer that.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Deaton.
So far, there's four. Ms. Zakowski?
The city attorney is at the table. Do you want to weigh in on the, the response to the status of the consent decree?
No, I was just here in case there are any questions that, that may need?
Sit tight, we have five council members out there. Ms. Zakowski?
Members of the council, I absolutely agree with, with the sentiment that Councilmember Walters expressed. What I'm, there had been a request from Councilmember Burnson to continue this one week, and I think the discussion, and the very important discussion that Mrs. Walters has said perhaps the council should have, would probably be best if we delay a week, because at that point, we will know what the police commissioner, Commissioner Mr. Chalif chooses to do, if he chooses to take the option of appeal and bring it to council, and if he does not choose to do that, whether or not, how that wants to inform what the council might do on the other, on the future of the consent decree and how we will go forward in its implementation. But I think we have some time now, that is time that the charter allows the commissioner to exercise an option, and at this point, I think if we continue it for a week, we have all of our rights to discuss this and to look at whatever else we might choose in this report on the consent decree and whether other direction we might want to give to the CLA or by council consensus choose to do, and I think that that is what I would recommend, that we continue this for one week.
One week.
Excuse me, till next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday would be the 13th. Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. Deaton, I think I looked at my calendar this morning, it said I had about 143 days left here.
You're not the only one.
I'll cut to the chase. In this process that we've put together for further negotiations and selection of a monitor, for example, what is considered consensus in terms of what ultimately comes back to the council as a recommendation? I mean, do you guys like three to two? Is that considered a vote, or is it?
The, as it relates to the monitor, the way I interpreted the council's action is that the mayor's office and myself would negotiate a contract. If I didn't agree with the candidate involved, I would bring that problem to you.
Okay, and?
If I did, I would bring a consensus document.
Okay, I, I mean, that's one question I have.
Right.
In terms of the negotiations that are ongoing with the judge and, in regards to implementation of the consent decree, and again, I'm going on what I read in the newspaper because these discussions are supposed to be pretty much internal. Do you believe that the absence of Mr. Chalif, who's been part of this team, should be replaced? Or should we leave it vacant?
This is an interesting choice. I hadn't really thought about it in those terms. I, I think the difficulty of replacement is that Mr. Chalif, there's, having been a part of it, there's really no way to replace five months of negotiations with DOJ, and I wouldn't really want anybody even to go through a, a quick course in that. So I'm not sure that replacement is, obviously, there can be somebody involved who represents the current interest of the police commissioner and/or the police department, but in a, I don't believe that there is a replacement in, in that sense of the word available.
Yeah, the makeup of the negotiating team right now does include a representative from the police from the police department and does include a representative from the mayor's office.
Currently, the, the police, the, there was a four-person negotiating team, which was suggested by the president of the council, and that was the, my office, the city attorney, the mayor's office, and a representative of the police commission. That was myself, Mr. Hahn, Kelly Martin, and Mr. Shalif. The police department was present during all the negotiations and Deputy Chief Pomeroy, but actually wasn't one of the four of the negotiating team.
Okay, I was aware of Mr. Pomeroy, I thought he was. Okay, so then, the status quo right now is our negotiating team is made up of the CLA's office, which represents the council, the city attorney's office, and the mayor's office. That's the status as of right now with Mr. Shalif's absence?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Savornich.
I agree with Councilwoman Zikowski. I think that we should continue the discussion in depth in a week, but I disagree with almost everything I've heard so far. In eight years of almost sitting on this council, sometimes we deal in the surreal. When we negotiated the consent decree, then was then, now is now, I heard the majority of you feel that the only reason we were in discussions to begin with because you felt that there was no choice. If you don't feel that way, then the only other option that you do feel is that you feel that LAPD cannot reform itself under the current administration, that administration being the police chief or the police commission, the independent review panel, but you need to say that. You need to say, I do not have faith that the LAPD can reform itself, and because of that, that's why I voted for the consent decree. But if you do feel that the LAPD could reform itself, and the only reason that you entered in the consent decree because you felt you have, you had no choice because the DOJ was pressuring us into signing the decree, you got to stand up to the plate and say that too. I don't feel that way. I feel that the LAPD can reform itself. I don't think the DOJ is pressuring us anymore because we have a new administration, and we need to take another look at it. That's my position. It may be a position of a few others, but I don't want to talk about that today. Let's talk about it in a week when others or more are here to talk about that. But I disagree with almost everything I've heard today. Let's talk about it next Tuesday.
Mr. Ridley Thomas. There's one more after you, if that's what you were wondering.
Madam President, members of the council, I seek to answer Mrs. Walters' question, which was essentially, where do we go from here? My first response to that is to say, certainly not backwards, as would be the direction that some would point us toward. My colleague to my left, physically, not politically, offers an insight that the police department is perhaps capable of reforming itself. I don't know very much about the advances of modern medicine, but I've never in this life heard of any patient curing him or herself from cancer or any terminal illness. And I wish to say that that which plagues this department, and this is not a wholesale slam on the department, it is corrosive to the very civic life that we ought to celebrate. Indeed, I do think some of the things that have been disclosed, and I suspect that which will be disclosed in the future, is nothing short, they are nothing short of cancerous, and we ought to be prepared to deal with it. I'm struck by what has already begun to happen at the police commission. We have a grid here that talks about the DOJ consent decree interim budget proposal, et cetera, cost breakdown in summary, but the substance is what is of concern, not the dollars. There is retrenchment already setting in place on the issues that are very basic, on the traffic pedestrian data collection decision that we made as a part of the consent decree, the issue of mental illness program evaluation, the issue of audit inspections and supervision, the implementation of Teams Two, the employee-staff relations, a whole range of things already being set aside by this new improved supposedly reform-minded commission absent one commissioner. Ms. Walters, you are precisely correct. The question before this council here and now is what is it that we will do to provide leadership in the best interest of the citizenry of Los Angeles? And I believe that means that we continue forward constructively, persuasively, with reform, not at the expense of public safety, but as a way to enhance public safety and more fundamentally to build public confidence and trust in the Los Angeles Police Department. That's what's at stake, and it is our job to see to it that it will happen, because at this point in time, no one else in an official capacity seems willing to step up to the plate and do it.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. Since we're continuing the discussion and not talking about issues today, I thought I'd add my voice to the non-discussion that we're continuing. You know, we have two missions in this city related to the police department right now. One is to assure that reform sticks with the police department, and the second is to assure that we rebuild a department whose staffing levels will be lower than they were three years ago in the next five months. Two missions. The actions of the past couple days, the firing of the police commission president divert our attention from the very specific elements of each of those missions that should be all we're caring about right now. And instead of talking about precisely what measures we're going to take to bolster recruitment in the department, what measures we're going to take to assure reform happens immediately in the department, most civic discussion this week is focused on who the police commission president should be. It's a distraction from where our goals ought to be, and it does a disservice to the residents of the city to have that distraction occupy our time, but it is what it is. So, it's before us. Now, as many have said, Mr. Shalif has to choose for himself whether he wants to have that battle brought to the city council floor, and if he does choose to do it, and it is his choice, and his choice alone, I made very clear that I'm going to do whatever I can to reverse the decision, and many others have said something similar to that. And we have another issue to debate, and that was one Mr. Hernandez raised, and that is irrespective of what happens regarding the presidential appointment of the commission, who does this council choose to have be appointed to the team that negotiates? And that issue, I think, should be deferred until Mr. Shalif makes his own decision, because one issue moots the other, depending upon which way that decision goes. Having said all those things, I want to address what Mr. Savornich said and conclude by raising or emphasizing something Mr. Ridley Thomas said. Mr. Savornich indicates that the landscape somehow has changed, that the premises on which we decided to pursue the consent decree are no longer valid. He's wrong. The Department of Justice has sued the city. There's a lawsuit pending in a federal court. We're not waiting for the lawsuit, it's there. And the key staff people who have been at the table negotiating day in, day out with the city haven't gone anywhere. They're career DOJ staff people, and if anything, they've given every indication that we're the city to backslide, a term I choose on purpose, they're going to pursue the lawsuit. And as I said before, when we were debating that issue in the first place, if we allow ourselves to be sued, more than 100 overturned criminal convictions, and the information contained appropriately in the board of inquiry report provide ample evidence, admissible ample evidence of a patterned practice, we would lose that lawsuit. And people are talking about the degree to which Judge Fies is trying to insert himself into this discussion now. Well, goodness knows, if we lost that lawsuit, an unelected federal judge would have unilateral discretion to issue whatever edict he wants regarding the police department, and that can't be better than the direction we're headed in right now. It is worse. For the rank-and-file officer in the field, it's a heck of a lot worse. Let's tell it like it really is. Now, I want to conclude by referring to what Mr. Ridley Thomas mentioned earlier. It is up to us. You know, there are moments, there haven't been enough of them, I think, in the last several years, but there are moments, and this is one of them, when the metal of the leadership of the city will be tested here, not elsewhere, here. We have a meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee on Police Policy and Practices, whatever it's called, on Monday. That's the forum. We will either demonstrate concrete, specific leadership to the city regarding those two missions, reform and rebuilding the department, or not. It's a delicate balance. It's up to us to show that we can achieve that delicate balance. As Mr. Ridley Thomas said, perhaps no one else will. And the last thing I want to say is this, it is said that the police department can reform itself. Since when was that the structure of governance in the city? The department itself was never charged with the responsibility of reforming itself. There's civilian oversight in this city. There's a police commission, a city council, and a mayor. The department was never to be reforming or acting unilaterally. It acts pursuant to civilian direction, and if nothing else, that's at the core of the debate that we're seeing this week.
Okay, Michael, I hate to interrupt this because I agree with everything you're saying, but you're over your time here. No, no, come on, not, Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, I recently heard that there's an expression around here that goes, that was then and this is now. As you know, I was one of the biggest critics and advocates of trying to protect the city's interests in terms of the Department of Justice taking over the police department, but as they say, that was then and this is now. And now that we're at this point, in this juncture of bringing a better police department to our city, I really believe that we need to focus in on some of the issues that Mr. Fuhr highlighted at the tail end of his eloquent speech about the structure. One of the most important things that I think we have to look at is the fact that, from my viewpoint, the commission, as we sell it to the public, as the public perceives it, sees it as our civilian oversight of the police department. I was speaking with a gentleman yesterday from the Pat Brown Institute at Cal State LA, and he was shocked to hear that the police commission, part of their duties is deciding where our official police garages are stationed. He didn't think that was really what he envisioned our police commission doing. When I told them that they decide the contracts on, or at least give the initial decision on the contract, or what type of radios we're going to have in our police cars, he thought, that's not what I expect from my police commission. I really think we're at a juncture now, and unfortunately, we didn't do it thoroughly enough during charter reform, to really look at what our police commission's role should be in our structure. Maybe it's time to look at full-time commissioners, but not necessarily because we want them to do the contracting for those radios, or we want them to do this placement of those police garage locations, but primarily to do what I believe the people anticipate and expect from the police commission, which is to protect not only the police department from themselves, because we know we have bad officers out there. It's statistically ridiculous to think that we don't have bad officers in our police department, but also to protect the police, excuse me, to protect the citizens from the police department in the rank and file when they're doing out their rogue activities. My primary goal at this point, because we have spent so much energy, and there have been so many proposals that deal with the discipline, the monitoring, the tracking of problem officers, I would love to see, and I'm going to push real soon, for us to start stripping away some of these more administrative duties that the police commission does currently, and restructuring that police commission so it plays a more active role in this area of reforming the police department. I think it's time that we really own up to the fact that commissions in their inception in the 1920s and '30s were a part of this structure to diffuse authority, to combat corruption, nepotism, basically favoritism in contracting. Now, at this juncture in 2001, we really have an opportunity to rid those duties and focus on police reform, protecting the community, and really having a good police department. So, I really think the opportunity is before us, and I agree with my colleague that the leadership has to come from the council, and we need to step up.
Certainly beginning to look that way, isn't it? I have two more council members who want to be heard on this item, and I will call on them, but I just want to remind you that the item actually, this is a very interesting discussion, but the item on the agenda is specifically to note and file a previous report from the legislative analyst on the status of the consent decree and to request future reports on the same. And, sorry, what?
And the motion is to continue this for one week because...
Yes, yes, but the, the report that we're continuing for, the motion we're, that which we are continuing for one week is this request for additional reports. Ms. Chick is next.
Thank you, Madam President. Similarly to my colleagues who have just spoken, I also very strongly question our ability, or the department's ability, to reform themselves. I think it was almost 10 years ago that the same people and the same organizations as now opposed the Christopher Commission recommendations and campaigned against Charter Amendment F. But the voters of this city thoughtfully contemplated what was before them. They disagreed with those who were in opposition, and they expressed their will through their vote and said, we want an independent civilian commission, which we clearly see we don't have today in the mayor's recent action of removing a commissioner who disagrees with him. The voters said, we want stronger civilian oversight. Reform themselves, we've got history, recent history, a track record that has failed to look at. Teams Two, the personnel tracking system that's so essential, was a Christopher Commission recommendation, colleagues, and somehow, this mayor's commission and this department didn't have the wherewithal and the will to put that in place. So, it's now another part of a consent decree. It took years for this mayor's commission to move forward on creating the inspector general, part of what the voters wanted in Charter Amendment F. And when that role was created, that position was created and filled, what happened? The first person who filled it was sabotaged, and the inspector general today is still being blocked from doing his job appropriately. This is not about an expression on our part of lack of faith or confidence or appreciation in the men and women in blue and the civilians behind them in our police department. It is an expression of lack of confidence in the top executive management of the leadership of both the department and this city. Why do we have a consent decree? Why do we have the Department of Justice suing us, holding a stick over our heads? Why did we agree to this? Not only because we had no other choice and it was finally the right thing to do because we cannot reform ourselves, but because we have leadership in this city at the top that didn't direct his commissioners to energetically move forward on the reforms and the recommendations that had been put before us 10 years ago. And if that had been done, colleagues, I believe fervently, we would neither have had Rampart nor the consent decree.
Thank you. Mr. Ridley Thomas for the second time.
Madam President, members of the council, it does occur to me that what the mayor did effectively precipitated a conflict that was, in fact, avoidable. And it's not simply an issue of Mr. Shalif. It's much larger than that. It's much more profound than that, in my view, and I think that's the point that several of you have made. What's at stake here is the centrality of civilian authority in oversight of the Los Angeles Police Department, and the extent to which sworn personnel aided and abetted by one key civilian has sought to undercut that. by one key civilian, has sought to undercut that. Now, I think what happens as a result of this, the mayor may wish to think that he can strong-arm the police commission, as is evident that he has done so, but I think this council has to make it abundantly clear, he will not strong-arm us, and that we will, because we are obliged to, serve to the best of our ability, the citizens of Los Angeles. What's at stake is not the individual personalities that we're talking about. If it is, we ought to talk about those individuals or those personalities who have been subjected, I mean historically, systematically, traditionally, communities that are subjected to the worst forms of police misconduct that any of us would choose to discuss. That's what this is about, and not simply brutality, but more profound than that, corruption. And any mayor who thinks that his remaining months in office, his legacy is more important than the well-being of the citizenry itself, is a mayor who is sorely misguided. And I think it's our job to point that out and to correct this in the most creative, constructive, and forceful ways that we can bring to bear.
Mr. Holden, for the first time.
Madam President, members, I sense a height of frustration on the part of the council members, where they have decided that they recognize that their problems within the police department, five years, 10 years, and after the Christopher Commission report, some of those problems identified, as well as some of the individual offices. And then they're saying, "Very little, nothing's been done." I think a lot has been done, but we can't identify it because we're still camouflaging it with further discussions. Like, the way you solve assistance problems, and put in place assistance management programs for the purpose of doing that, identify what the problem is, and measure the effectiveness of the problem before you introduce another one. But that's not in the thinking of those who sometime were elected. If you think you're frustrated, what do you think about the public getting mixed signals from us, from the police department, the mayor, from the press, who's saying, "Things are being done," and on the other hand, is saying, "It's not being done," and what they see, they don't like? Crime is going up, and what precipitates that, I don't know. Police officers have come in here and said, "We -- our morale is low," and we still pay them well, and you let them get away with that? In fact, I challenge one time to time, haven't seen him lately. It's like a matrix, you've got a maze of problems. The best way to insulate the police department from change is to keep talking about it the way you have in the past years, rather than identifying what the problems are, and they have been, we have been told that, and then say, "All right, what is the solution to this problem? What's the solution to that problem?" And then give it some time to be resolved. This is, should no longer be a political issue. I mean, it's nice to make a nice speech and get things off your chest, but what after that? I mean, I've got to ask myself, where is this crime being committed? If it's under rides, where and why? I've got to tell you, the game of politics on this issue should be over. Sure, we have problems in the police department, we should work hard to clean that up, but I don't see that we made much progress in the minds of many in the past 10 years, and that's very unfortunate. It's a systems management problem. You've got to be managed from the system. I see no reason for having, why not we should have civilian oversight? I don't see anything wrong with that, because you've got to have a check and balance, you can't do it on your own. And, by God, hey, why don't we just get started?
Well, because you still have 13 seconds.
Oh, okay. But, you know, I lost a lot of time. You should give me special privileges. Thank you very much.
Ms. Chick for the second time.
To add one last thought, and probably in response to what was just said, and that's also to remember in a very pragmatic way, that what this has all translated into in terms of the department not making more progress, and the reforms that were suggested earlier not being advanced more effectively, has translated into multi-millions of dollars that the people we all serve are paying, the greatest waste of dollars that we all know we would like to allocate in the delivery of basic services that none of our districts receive enough of, according to the calls we all get from our constituents. That is, the final end result in terms of dollars and cents, is that it's cost an incredible amount of wasted public dollars.
Ms. Mizakowski for the second time.
I can just close and again reiterate that I, my request was to continue this for one week, and it was precisely for all the comments that have been stated around this table. This report, which is just a note and file of a preliminary, of a report, is a report that was prepared prior to the firing of Mr. Chalif, is a report dependent on the reforms moving forward under the consent decree with a negotiating team, where Mr. Chalif, as the president of the commission, and as the most reform-minded, and the one who was most regularly holding the department management's feet to the fire to implement these issues, is no longer there, at least until we find out what his choice is going to be. We may need to amend this report, not even await for further reports, but we will know that a little closer in time next Tuesday. We will also have the items that Mr. Ridley Thomas talked about, which is the action yesterday the police commission to remove from its agenda, moving forward on funding some of the various things that are part of the consent decree, that are part of implementing reforms, that are part of the systems management that Mr. Holden has talked about. And we will have that meeting on Monday, and then come back on Tuesday with more information, more knowledge as to what our options are, and that, I think, will be the time whether or not we need to amend this report. We will have that information available.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to open the roll on the motion to continue for one week the report that, of the legislative analyst from January 29th, and a request to various entities to continue reporting to us. Open the roll on continuing it one week. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, that is continued for one week. And we move now to item 13, but hang on, because we have a number of items in closed session, members of the council, and we are not exactly overflowing with members here. So we do need to try to get some of these done.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
If I may, with your permission, I think a motion is in order to reaffirm, the council to reaffirm its commitment to the implementation of the consent decree.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, I don't think we can do that without advance notice of some sort.
All right, well...
But, you know, bring in a motion, and we'll introduce it. You can do that today.
All right. Thank you so much.
But while you're doing that, let us move on to item 13, called special by Mrs. Walters.
Madam Chair, I just want to mention to Councilman Ridley Thomas that Mr. Savornich continues to give us that opportunity.
Yes, he does. Okay, can we, come on, guys. Ms. Walters, item 13, you called special.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Council members, this is an item that has been in committee, and it's been in more than one committee, and I've raised questions about it. Basically, there's some additional money for funding of street paving. I would like for the staff to come forward to the table. The formula that the Department of Street Services has come up with, I feel, is widely unfair. It grants some of our districts over 10 miles of paving, and other districts only three miles of paving. I have asked for and received from the department a chart with all streets that are in the city, and they put it by local street lane miles. We're no longer talking about streets, we're talking about lane miles. And then the reconstruction streets, they separated that. Every district in the city has streets that need reconstruction. Now, the department's rationale for this widely vacillating chart that would pave some streets out of all proportion to other districts, they're saying because they're going for, they're using 80% of it for streets that need attention, and only 20% for failed streets. I asked the question, if they divided it by council district, could they still utilize the 80-20 formula? And they indicated, yes, but there was another reason that they couldn't do it this way. It seems to me that, in fact, we've done some math on it, and if this was done on a more equitable basis, every council district would get about six miles, or a little more than that, rather than Council District Three getting 10, Council District 12 getting 12 miles, Council District One getting three miles, Council District 13 getting two and a half miles. That is just not an equitable proposal that the department has presented. And so I ask council members that this item be sent back to committee and be brought in with a more equitable proposal here. I don't know how we can justify one district having two and a half miles paved and another district having 12 miles paved. When we look at those in numbers of streets, District 13, which would get the two and a half miles, has 45 miles of streets that need reconstruction, and 406 lane miles of streets.
Ms. Walters.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
And we have at least five council members who want to add to this. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I have a series of questions for the staff, but to be clear, there's the item before us today. I sit on public work, so I want to make sure I understand correctly the recommendations before us today, and that would be not only for the job classifications and the allocation of monies, but specifically to approve the plan, the original plan presented to us by the Bureau of Street Services. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So with that on the table, I want to move approval of the item. Mr. Scott, you and I went to Sacramento on a couple of occasions to lobby for this money. Let me ask you a couple of questions as to how we got to this distribution of those resources. Would you say that some council districts are larger than others?
Yes, that's true.
Would you say that there are some council districts with more street miles than others?
Yes, that's correct.
Would you say that there are streets in need of repair or reconstruction in all parts of the city?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, would you say that there are some streets in need of repair or reconstruction at various levels in each of those council districts?
Yes.
Now, describe briefly, if you will, what the intent of the dollars were as approved by the legislature for coming to local governments.
AB 2928 was put together as a repair bill to go back and take care of infrastructure that had been damaged and that needed resurfacing, reconstruction, minor repair, cracked ceiling, slurry ceiling, those types of things that would help maintain the road, repair the road, reconstruct the road and infrastructure, or prevent it from deteriorating further.
Okay, thank you. And it's because of all that information, and maybe it's the analytical side of me that says, "I like your first recommendation." We have varying degrees of need throughout the city, but everybody has a large need when it comes to street resurfacing, street repair, street maintenance. The proposal you first presented to us was strictly based on need, and it was a formula that included the number of street miles throughout the city, in each district, how many streets are in need of repair versus reconstruction, et cetera. And I think that's how we should allocate the money. It's not dividing by 15. I think dividing by 15 would be inappropriate and irresponsible. So your first recommendation to us is the fairest way to go. It's consistent with what the state mandated when it approved these dollars to begin with, and so that's what I moved for approval. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, when we look at street needs, is, does the formula include the usage rate per mile, or is it just the miles? What this looks at is basically the square foot of resurfacing and the square foot of reconstruction in the entire city and each council district. These are on local streets, so the data for trucks and buses is all on basically major streets. Okay. So I have the experience of having all of San Gabriel Valley and parts of Manabala, South Almani, unloading, coming off the freeways on First, Fourth, Cesar Chavez, and cutting through Bojai to get to downtown. So I have that usage and vehicle traffic that's not organic to my district. Does this formula protect me from that, or is this formula doesn't even consider that usage? No, I don't have any data on that usage, so that was not included. But is it part of the formula? Is the usage part of the formula? No, the formula takes a look at what is today. How much, how many square feet need resurfacing? How many square feet need reconstruction? Okay, so let's just say you resurfaced my street, First Street, this year, get it pristine. And you resurfaced another street in another district, get it pristine. My usage rate is three times the other districts, so my cycle of repair is more often. Do I get picked up on that cycle, or do I wait every five, 10, 15, 20 years under the normal cycle? Do I get bumped up that list ahead of that other district? Right now, pardon me, right now, we're looking at roughly every 15 years for major streets. We don't have quite enough funding to meet that schedule. Okay, so if my street takes a beating and the other street does not, I have to wait the cycle, even though I'm at disrepair earlier? You should be getting maintenance earlier, but not total resurfacing or reconstruction earlier. Okay, so I have a pothole maintained street earlier because I'm not getting back on that cycle fast enough? I mean, there are certain streets that take a beating. I understand what you're saying. I don't believe it is true that streets are failing three times faster at one place over another. What we've seen over the past 15 and 20 years, as traffic has increased, is the key element is where the buses are. That will tell you, and trucks, and that will tell you what's going to need work sooner. Okay, so does your formula respond to what you just identified, or is this just a mile thing? This formula deals with local streets. It's not where the trucks and buses normally go. So this formula does not look at truck and bus usage. So when we look at the usage on a local street, we're only concerned with automobiles for private use? Primarily the...
Theoretically, that's what a local street has.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, theoretically, but I'm just saying...
No, I understand, and your time's up.
Okay.
I think you and the department need to have some further discussion here, though.
Okay.
And push the button again if you want. We've got seven people up at the moment. Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Ridley, oh.
I have dinner.
Madam President, members of the council, I think it's reasonably obvious that we could debate this ad nauseam. And it's also obvious to me that the capacity to garner the requisite votes is limited at best. Mr. Hernandez, early on, mentioned that this needed to be continued. Mrs. Walters essentially formalized that by way of a motion. Let me offer this perspective. I think we should just simply divide these streets by 15, adopt that, and move on. That way, we don't have to spend an inordinate amount of time haggling over it. It's a simple formula, and if, in fact, there's a second somewhere in the House, I would so move.
Second.
Madam President, we have multiple seconds to a motion to divide the number of streets to be paved by 15. All council members would get the, council districts would get the same. All council members would get the, council districts would get the same number of streets paved, and we can move on with this item. It's before us, that's the thing.
All right. Mr. Ridley Thomas has moved that we change the formula and simply divide it up by fifteen. Ms. Chick. Oh, and Mr. Padilla, before you start, I haven't started your time yet. Mr. Padilla has moved the item as it appears on the agenda. Go ahead.
Yes, I have also a couple of questions and then some comments. I thought one of my colleagues mentioned some figures about the number of miles per council district that have been found to be in need of repaving. Is there such a chart or information? I have this chart, but it doesn't include the information about the number of miles in each council district that need repaving.
Yes, we have that data. I'd be happy to supply it to you.
Okay. And I'll go back to that in a minute. And then certainly, we know that these are, and I'm very pleased that the state has made these funds available in addition to dollars that we already have in the city that are being used to do exactly this kind of work. So in terms of those other funds, I think it would be interesting to know how those dollars have been allocated. I don't think that it's been divided evenly by each council district, has it?
No.
And it was based on certain criteria?
Yes. There's several formulas in effect as we speak. The primary formula that we've been working under has been the percent of miles in each council district. So if you have five percent of the miles in the city, you would get five percent of the budget.
And we've been working that way for years.
Yes.
Right, but the end result is that it's not an even division with the rest of the funds we're talking about.
No, that's correct.
That each council district gets. I remember, because I was dismayed when I saw that my council district had gone backwards in terms of the number of miles that it was getting in comparison to some of the other council districts. You know, colleagues, I think it certainly is always easy to say, let's divide by fifteen, but it doesn't always make good sense or deliver services based on need. And when we look at the fact that there are much larger numbers of miles in certain council districts that are badly in need of repaving, certainly, that criteria should be taken into account, as Mr. Scott has said in this case. Before we start thinking about changing this allocation, I also think we need to remember and look at the division of large amounts of money other than this allocation and how those dollars were divided up. They were not divided evenly, and some of the very council districts that, in this case, are receiving more funds were exactly the council districts that received a much smaller share of the other repaving funds. So I'm not convinced at all that it is a logical way to divide up. I know that sometimes there are dollars that come through and resources for a variety of things, where certain council districts are eligible and others are not, or where the criteria look at certain things such as low-income neighborhoods, et cetera, that disallow the even dividing and disallow certain resources coming to council districts that are receiving funds here. So I'm in favor of going forward with what's before us and think that I would also like to get the information about number of miles in each council district. But clearly, that's been taken into consideration here, as Mr. Padilla pointed out.
Mr. Hernandez.
God, I've been dying to speak on this issue.
Now's your chance.
Mr. Scott, I'm going to use Mr. Padilla's format. I thought it was very effective. Can you count to fourteen?
Yes.
Because the thirteenth is already a no vote. And the formulas are going to change. You see, for decades, the formula's been square mileage. And what happens is the inner-city streets always got the smaller percentage. And those areas that want to succeed, see, I keep on arguing, we should succeed from the city, because those areas that want to succeed always got the lion's share of street maintenance money. And then what happens in the inner city, because all these other people come and travel our streets, they do get beat up. But what's also happening is we have things like utility holds. So I fight hard to get the three percent I'm allocated, and then I'm finding out that about forty percent of that gets spent because of the utility hold. And it's not like the next year I have more, it's just that it continues to go other places. So my neighborhood streets never get the proper attention because there's never enough funding to get there. Now, this is supplemental money. I'm not talking about changing the formula of how we already allocate our street maintenance money. I'm talking about the additional money we just received. You see, I still travel my streets, and I was just traveling down Third Street by the Chamber of Commerce and asked myself, why is this street so beat up? Why does it have so many patches? And then I remember, oh, yeah, there's something called the Internet, and we're putting fiber optics. Oh, yeah, and our utilities are changing them, and we're doing that. So we never get that proper service on the crossroads. I just wanted to explain that because it's been happening for decades. And when I asked the simple question, if you could count, when my staff and Mr. Pacheco talked to me about this a couple of weeks ago, and I said, this is how the formula works, and this is what you got to do. When Mr. Ridley Thomas pointed out, Ms. Walters pointed it out, what you have to understand is our streets are just as important as your streets. In fact, some of us will argue that our streets are used more than your streets. And when I say yours, the more affluent areas of the city, those same areas with those big lots, with all that park space, with, you know, more schools, and all we're arguing about is our fair share, not more and not less. And we have a role in sustaining this city, in sustaining this economy, and people travel our streets. So I agree with Mr. Thomas's motion. In fact, I think, because this is supplemental money, it should reflect like a block rat. We should get more of it. However, I'm willing to abide by the agreement of everybody get their fair share, and I think that way, we can get eight votes. You see, what's happening politically is reality. The majority of your people are having to live in smaller spaces, and that's going to affect the formulas.
All right, let me just remind you, before I call the next five speakers, that what is, as far as I can tell, the formula is not in the Budget and Finance Committee report, and somebody will correct me before we're done if I'm wrong about that. But it appears, I just want to remind you, there's like nine separate items on here that are not directly related to the formula, so, and some of those need to get done. All right, now, yeah, we still have five. Mr. Holden.
Hey, Mr. Scott, we have, remember El Nino?
Yes.
If it rains like El Nino, and El Nino compromises integrity of our roads.
Yes.
That's right. So therefore, whatever formula that we implore is going to be changed microscopically or whatever incremental difference by the rains, and they do come periodically. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, fine. Did you include the rains in your formula when you decided how much money should be allocated? Yeah, tell me the truth on that now.
Now, we just took a look at a snapshot in time.
That's right. That's a fair answer, and I appreciate it very much, which is the real reason why this should go to committee. I know what Mr. Thomas is asking, split it fifteen ways, and fifteen ways may not be the fairest way to do it. But look at all the factors that are going to be associated with the integrity of the roads and when they should be repaved. For example, you transport a lot of people down Wilshire Boulevard by bus, and I know that was not included. More people by bus down Wilshire Boulevard than all of the city of Chicago put together by bus. Just think about what we're talking about here today. The major freeways, 405, the 10, Harbor Freeway, loading and unloading on the surface streets, your major secondary highways, which is not considered a major factor. That, those trucks, we talked about a truck and ordinance at one time, deliver on community streets, because we have a noise ordinance that says you deliver a certain time between a certain time, and they use those streets, and they contaminate the integrity of the roads, which is probably some factors you have not considered. So we do get major uses on the inner city. That's where the people are, and that's where you're moving the people. So I see nothing wrong with it, because you don't have eight votes for anything. I think we go, should go over back and refine it, take it to committee, take a hard look at it, and come back with a fair plan. And I hope that Mr. Padilla will reconsider his motion, hope that Mr. Thomas will reconsider his motion, that Mrs. Walter's motion be the one that should prevail, and we should take another look at it. Do you have any, do you see anything wrong with that, Mr. Scott?
There's nothing wrong with it.
Okay, that's...
That's it.
There's nothing wrong with it. Say, what's fair, and Ms. Chick and Mr. Fuhrer, I'm going to tell you. You want what's fair. If it turns out that what's fair before us today will come back, fine. At least you've taken another look at it. Everybody had a chance to make their point. But if you want to shut the door now, I just don't think it's the appropriate thing to do. I think you really want to take a look at this. If it comes back the way it is, when you look at all the other factors that have not been considered, so be it. I'll vote for it.
Good. That's a good place to stop. Ms. Sikowsky.
Mr. Holden, this has gone to committee. It's gone to Public Works Committee, and they recommended it, and it's gone to Budget and Finance Committee, and they recommended it. And all these same questions were asked, and we go through this every time we look at street mile issues. Mr. Padilla is right. We have to defer, I think, at this point, to our Bureau of Street Services, to our director, to look at what is fair. What is fair is not just looking at street miles and where there's more street miles, but looking at street miles where there's wear and tear. And I think when you ask whether El Nino is taken into consideration, or when you take, what Mr. Pacheco was asking, and that's where there's more truck traffic, Mr. Scott may not count the truck traffic, but the truck traffic is going to show more wear and tear on some of those local streets where truck traffic shouldn't be, and it's going to show faster wear, and it's going to get into that cycle faster because it's going to be where there's wear and tear per street mile in the city. This is what's the fair decision. Members of the council, we talked a little bit earlier in the earlier item about leadership, and leadership is doing, I think, what is fair in the city, what is appropriate overall. Some of the decisions and recommendations that are being made today are perhaps a little less fair, in my opinion, and a little more political. We rarely come around this horseshoe and say, we've got a pot of money, let's divide it fifteen ways. That's a political decision. I think what's fair is to listen to our advisors, listen to those who really know the city as a whole without boundary lines, without district lines, and says, here's what we recommend. And I think that the council takes the higher course, the higher road, when we follow that advice. And I think it is the advice. I think there are those who, you know, I think everyone can count votes here today, and I don't think there is eight votes for anything. So if this were to be sent back, it would be to send back just to reinforce, I think, what one committee has asked for, what one committee delayed and asked for again, what a second committee has asked for, and I think that, what we have is the recognition of what is the best recommendation for this, to go out and deal with all of our streets, all of those problems, and what our constituents are really demanding. And I really would first recommend that we move forward with it, but if not, send it to an appropriate committee, just to come back in a week with one more reiteration.
Nice try. I don't think it's going to work. All right, here we go on round two. Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam President. And, Madam President, with your permission, this is a surprise, I know, I have two students here today who have been observing us, who are from the L.A. Job Corps. We have Jennifer Williams and Frank Alcazar, and they've come to learn a little bit... Good. They've come to learn a little bit about city government, and we welcome them.
You picked a good day.
Yeah, right. Thank you very much for coming. Now, you'll just start my time now. Mr. Scott, does the city have enough failing streets to divide the total miles by fifteen and still fill the need of implementing your eighty-twenty formula?
If you looked at the city on the network level and just looked at the total number of miles in the city, the network does not care if you take all these miles and put it in one council district or spread it out over fifteen, as long as you would say eighty-twenty.
No, the question is, the question is, you have adopted an eighty-twenty formula. That's what we're working with. And you have put it what, to me, is a wildly rational plan or unfair plan, maybe a less loaded term. And my question to you is, throughout the city, in all council districts, does the city have enough miles of failed streets for you to implement the eighty-twenty plan by dividing the total amount by fifteen, the total mileage amount by fifteen, and doing X number in each district according to the eighty-twenty plan?
The way I have to answer that question is to put it on a network level.
Okay. All right, my time is running out, and I will tell you, and I think your folks did the math for us, the answer is yes. And if you do the, divide the numbers by fifteen, you get an equitable number of miles per district, and that's going to be about six or six-point-two. The question that you set, or your presentation earlier when you first sat down, you said you have to follow the trucks and buses. That's where the streets are failing. That was basically your statement. We talk about some districts having more miles of streets than others. That's true, and as a consequence, their streets are utilized less than the streets in more compact districts and the streets who are bearing the heaviest brunt of the trucks and buses. Now, all those hillside residences and all those neighborhoods around that don't have truck traffic, don't have bus traffic, don't figure into this, or shouldn't figure into this. You've got to pay more attention to your inner-city streets and miles, and it seems to me that dividing it by fifteen is the fairest way to go. So council members, Ms. Sikowsky is right, it has been to Public Works and Budget and Finance, and I opposed it both places. I think that we're going to need to deal with it here, and Mr. Ridley Thomas has made the motion that we should adopt the fifteen, divided by fifteen formula and move on from here, and I certainly support that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fuhrer.
Boy, would I hate dividing by fifteen here, as I have on many other things. You know, I remember when I helped to create and served on the committee with, which Mr. Ridley Thomas chairs, the Adu Committee on Gangs, and we came back to the city council recommendations for some new anti-gang violence programming, and I did not seek funding for my district, even though we have gang problems in my district, because the money was so scarce that I felt that if we were to dissipate it by dividing by fifteen, we wouldn't be helping anybody very much. I hate dividing by fifteen. I much prefer the idea that instead, we focus on where the needs are most acute for a lot of things, including this. And the chips fall where they fall, because after all, our districts are the creation of politics. There's nothing about the merits that creates a boundary between one district and another. It had to do with whose precincts got what votes when ten years ago. Now, when it comes to...
...population, one person, one vote.
Well, and one, yeah, clearly, but the actual dividing lines for where one person, one vote would be are more arbitrary than they are based on anything merit-based. But here's the thing. I am certainly not an expert on which streets need things the most. It's not my job. We all know something about everything in this city, and none of us knows everything about a particular item. And we hire our experts to determine for us, in this case, Mr. Scott and his team, where the needs are most acute. I don't think, I mean, I'd like to know the answer publicly to the question, was there any political pressure of any kind from anybody, no names, put on the department, or did the department just come up with what they thought was the list of streets that needed it the most? What's the answer?
The answer is it comes from our pavement management system and consultant with our advisor, Dr. Mohammed Shaheen, internationally-known expert on pavement management. This was our best shot based on need.
Yeah. I, I, look... I, look, if it's the will of the council to divide by 15, and eight people wanna do that, I'll vote against it. It'll happen. But I think that we would be missing an opportunity here. You know, we used to do the street surfacing based on who yelled the loudest in our districts, to put it as bluntly as I can. We made lists, and the lists were often created on the basis of who was most politically active and vocal, and boy, it was that crummy. And it was very liberating to be able to say to my constituents about halfway through the six years I've served on this council, you know what? None of that. Whatever Street Services says, goes. And we're not gonna do anything other than where the merits dictated. I hope, I understand that for many of my colleagues, the issue is not that principle, but instead, what do the merits truly dictate? I understand that. All I know for sure is that I'm not in a position to say what formula makes the most sense. That's why we hire Street Services experts. And if we think that our experts aren't capable of telling us where the streets are that need resurfacing and repavement the most, we should hire new experts. But at some point, we have to defer to the judgment of people who are not doing this on the basis of politics, but on the basis of where they think the needs are the most acute.
Thank you. I'm just gonna inject one comment here and remind you that Mr. Scott said earlier that this is, this formula that we're arguing over is not the formula that includes the major streets which get the worst beating because of the buses. And this is extra money, and this is the local streets. The other streets also need to be fixed, but let's keep in mind what it is we're actually fighting over here. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. I know this discussion isn't close to an end, but I wanna commend Mr. Scott for beginning to answer most of his questions with, on a network level, because it is your responsibility to not just look at my district versus somebody else's district versus another part of the city, but look at the city in its entirety and tell us what needs to happen on a citywide basis. Now, this is just one source of money we have for street maintenance and repair. This is in addition to general fund dollars. This is in addition to block grant dollars that we get from the federal government and possibly other sources, and some of those of which come with, not strings attached, but clear intent as to where and how those dollars should be implemented. Now, let me ask you, if we were to add all those pots of dollars together, if we were to add all those street miles that we could be doing on an annual basis together, are we on track, or are we falling further and further behind the race to keep up?
We're still falling further, further behind, but we're doing it...
Okay. I'm gonna ask you to stop right there, because that's what we all need to understand. This is one source of money, and it's not about one district keeping up and another district falling back, or one district getting more than its fair share. None of us are getting our fair share, based on need.
Someone's gotten more for a long period of time.
Based on need, none of us are getting what we need to keep up. And so, let's just keep that in the forefront of our minds, as we're trying to figure out how do we most fairly and equitably move forward. And I can think of no better way, because we can talk about rain, we can talk about trucks, we can talk about number of miles and density of population. That's all taken into account in a technical way, based on your formula. And the end result is the need that we know we have today. And we've been presented, colleagues, a proposal that recommends spending this dollars based on that need. It's a department's technical, independent suggestion to us. And I believe that is the truest fair way to go. And I'm not being selfish here, because regardless of how we decide this, at the end of the day, on none of the grids, none of the proposals is my district number one. So I'm trying to stand here on principle, because I believe what we would be doing is right. And I'm standing here based on the principle that this money was given to us by the state. So I repeat, I move approval of the recommendation from the Public Works Committee, which is the first recommendation from the department. And I also wanna conclude with reminding us of the urgency, because this had at least one hearing that I know of in Budget and Finance, at least three hearings at the Public Works Committee. We went back and forth on all of this already. Now, we do have some talents that we need to follow by the state, otherwise we risk losing the money. And so, we may, today may not be that deadline, but that deadline is coming quick, and we need resolution of this item sooner rather than later. And I don't think sending it back to committee for further review and coming back to council and repeating this discussion and debate is gonna help get us there any quicker.
Okay, let's see if we can get there quicker. Mr. Ridley Thomas, and then Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I think Mr. Padilla's remarks are quite clear, and they serve to bolster the point that I want to make. He clearly spoke to the issue that none of us are getting all of what we deserve in terms of needs. That's precisely why, it seems to me, that if there was an equal, not equitable, but an equal application here, then everyone would at least get the minimum that all of us could enjoy, and that speaks to a basic principle of fairness. The difficulty that I have, and I think others may have, about the formula is that fairness does suggest that when a decision is made, that it is intelligible. And if it's tough to figure out why a formula is, has been constructed, or what the formula really means, it does go to the question of whether fairness is really operating. I mean, fairness is not all that complicated to understand or to unpack. And the formula that is being applied, which is an alternative to what had been discussed, so this is several iterations out now, I think, is something that we really do have to pay attention to. This approach, dividing by 15, is a minimalist approach to getting this done, so that all of our districts get at least a basic kind of servicing in this particular area of street surfacing. That's what is being proposed here. There is nothing unfair about that. It is unsatisfactory, because it doesn't satisfy all of what some persons might think they need and or deserve at this point, but it spreads it in a way that I do think is fair-minded. Is it the case, Mr. Scott, that at least in all districts, there's roughly six miles of resurfacing that is needed?
Yes.
If that is the case, I would think that it makes all the sense in the world to satisfy the needs across the board. There is no compelling argument that I can think of to satisfy, to satisfy some people's needs as they're defined, more than other people's needs. That's why I say all of our needs can be met by this minimalist approach that is equally applied. With that in mind, I take the argument that Mr. Padilla advances to essentially clarify the point that I make, and to restate that the motion that I put before us is probably a reasonable, not perfect way to dispose of this matter and do so today.
Well, try. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, I only rise because I'm sure it wasn't intentional, but some misrepresentations have been made, and I wanna clarify them for the record. One, I'm glad Mr. Fuhrer acknowledged that each one of us represents approximately the same number of constituents, and not any constituent should be short-changed. And that's why I recognize that those members who are fighting for this to continue and move on are the ones who got the lion's share of the resources. But the majority of us did not. And Mr. Scott, you told my staff that you had not done any studies about local street needs.
What I said was that we did not have any data from the Department of Transportation that would let me interject a chart or a percentage concerning how much traffic is on local streets in inner cities versus other places in this city. So I have no data.
Okay. That's important for us to understand, because many of us are fighting for what we know is the condition of our streets. The second question I wanted to ask you is, the formula of square footage and the amount of streets, isn't that what we currently use for purposes of allocation of these funds in regards to our general fund allocation?
No.
Okay. What do you use?
The formula that we've been using for the past several years has been the percentage of miles of street in a council district as compared to the miles of street in the city.
Right. And that's the formula you use. And Mr. Fuhrer said that that was not how you did it in the past, that basically it was whoever yelled the loudest. And I wanna clear that up, because since I've been here, which has been a little longer than you, they've used what he just described as a methodology. It wasn't who yelled the longest.
You're in the district, it's who yelled the longest.
Well, no, no, but I'm talking about, it's based on the amount of mileage. So there's a history of already short-changing some districts, some constituents, based on mileage. I'm just trying to explain that, because all we're arguing for today is this supplemental money. And I remember Mr. Padilla's very passionate speech about the needs of his constituents when I was trying to explain to him, we have a formula of census tracts and poverty that determines how the block grant is spent. And he was saying he needed more. And we agreed, and we compromised in that instance. But none of the block grant, by the way, goes to street resurfacing. And you mentioned that in your previous presentation. So I don't wanna confuse people. We either get transportation dollars for street resurfacing, or we allocate some money out of the general fund. And the formula has always been based on the number of miles of streets in a council district. And naturally, those with larger districts, bigger lots, more park space, are the ones who got the lion's share. And this council today is saying, this is our opportunity to make up that difference.
All right.
That's why I support Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion.
Okay. Now, let me just clarify where we are. First of all, if you check back on your agenda, you'll notice that this is, this motion includes, this Public Works and Budget and Finance Committee reports include a lot more than the formula, and the formula, to the extent that it's in here at all, is by implication. It's, what we are adopting is not specifically the formula, as far as I know. Is that correct? All right. Well, let me ask Mr. Scott. If we adopt the, well, let me ask it a different way, just so that we're clear, because we're gonna have to vote on a whole bunch of things. If we were to, all of the objections appear to be to the formula and its implications. If the formula is not adopted today, can we still adopt these other things and settle the formula separately, or do we need to just not adopt the whole schmear, including employment authority and new accounts, transferring accounts? The rest of them are all transfers.
If you do not adopt the formula, specifically say that the allocation of miles, as stated in the report per council district, will be determined later, that would allow us to move forward with starting to hire the people, because whatever the allocation turns out to be, I'm gonna need time to bring people on board.
Right. All right.
Can I just move separation of the questions, so that...
Yes, that's, thank you. That's exactly, I appreciate that. That's exactly what I'm trying to do here, so that we... Uh-oh, now I've got two more people who wanna be heard. Let me just say, let me remind you what motions are on the table. We have Mr. Padilla's motion moving the committee reports. We have Ms. Walters' motion sending the whole package back to committee. And we have Mr. Ridley Thomas's report, motion, which I assume dealt only with the motion, and I will try to clarify that with him, but he's on the phone right at the moment. Alex, could you please ask him?
Madam Chair.
Well, his motion was to divide by 15, but the, he did not address, and I wanna clarify, whether he was intending to substitute that. What I wanna know is whether your motion to divide by 15 was as a substitute for all the hiring authority and budget things, or only specifically on the formula?
Right.
And then Mr. Hernandez moved to divide the question, which is, would allow us to deal with your motion separate from the rest of it.
All right.
And Madam Chair, I said the last time I spoke that it wasn't gonna do any good to send it back to committee, because it's already been heard in two committees in which I sit. So I withdraw my motion...
All right.
...in favor of Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion and Mr. Hernandez's.
Okay. I think we are actually approaching a resolution, but I have still, now, Mrs. Walters, is that what you wanted to say? Because I have you listed here as another speaker.
Yes. I just wanted, what I wanted to say was that even though you may not find it explicitly written here...
No, no.
It is contained in here.
No, I understand that. I think the point is clear. And Mr. Pacheco, do you have something that we need to do before we vote? Go ahead.
I simply wanted to, in anticipation of a deadlock situation, maybe come up with a compromise that would advance, the lowest district here is 2.5 for District 13, so if we need to get there, we could at least move forward with the hiring and 2.5 for each district and fight another day, the good fight for the balance of that. But I'm just...
All right. So why don't you put that...
But I'm just saying, we'll put that in the backburner now.
Put that out, put that out here, and let's see how far we get.
Why don't we just move majority rule? No, well, there's no law of the motion.
Because we're not even up to the majority yet. I'm trying to get us there.
Just, everyone gets 2.5.
Sometime before dinner. All right. So the first motion is to divide the question. Okay?
Madam President?
Oh, yes, Mr. Fuhrer.
No, no. Constructively, it's point of order. If Mr. Pacheco was making another motion, which so far has not been the case, I was going to second the motion. He's not going to do that. Fine. Enough.
All right. Let me suggest the following order of procedure, and somebody will tell me if I've missed something here. First, we're gonna vote on whether to divide the question. If that passes, we will have divided the formula from everything else. All right? Then I'm gonna suggest that, at that point, we vote on the everything else. Okay? And then vote on the formula. That's probably not strictly correctly the way to do it, but at least, at least we'll have something in place. So first, open the roll on dividing the question, that is, to separate the formula out from everything else. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Hallelujah. We've made a step forward, or a turn of the wheel. Okay. The next vote will be on all of the hiring authorities, on everything else except the formula. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. More progress. Fourth with on that one, because you're gonna need to start doing your work. Now, that leaves us with the motion to substitute for the existing allocation, just dividing it by 15, right? That's Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion. So the, and that's a substitute to the recommendation in the committee. So the first vote would be...
(inaudible).
The first vote, first vote, first vote will be whether to substitute, dividing it by council district, for the formula contained in the committee reports. Open the roll on whether to substitute. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
6 ayes, 5 noes.
All right. So that did not pass. The, now, Mr. Pacheco...
Pass the motion to majority rules?
Yeah, it's a majority, the full council, however. Okay.
Another point of order, Mr. Scott, by when, if your hiring goes well, by when would you be prepared to actually start the work?
What I plan to do is to move two maintenance crews from maintenance activities to immediately start doing resurfacing work and then backfill those maintenance crews.
Immediately like tomorrow?
Immediately like next week.
All right. So we have to decide, Madam President, some formula immediately, or they're not, they're not gonna meet the times...
It is my great hope that we're gonna decide at least some formula that will get us started. And so, my ques...
(inaudible).
Well...
I have a recommendation that I think will satisfy it.
Well, Mr. Pacheco had one in before you. Okay?
Well, that's what Mr. Pacheco was saying.
Mr. Pacheco.
Yeah, we still have the committee report.
I'm sorry.
We have the committee report.
We voted on, oh, yeah, right. That's right. Good point. Thank you.
Ask for no vote.
You guys get to walk around.
We ask for no vote.
All right. So the next, hang on, now I've got two more people who wanna talk. The next vote is on whether to adopt the formula as articulated in the committee report. Open the roll on that, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
What a shock. 5 ayes, 6 noes?
We have you down.
5 ayes, 6 noes.
All right. That didn't pass either.
Can I move majority rules now?
Yeah.
It's still a majority of the council, the full council.
We'll respect the majority.
And you can take up the fact that there are several members not present. All right? Now, would you...
I was, my motion is to simply, of the 90.41 miles that are on the table, that each council district get 2.5 allocated today, and that the balance be redistributed at a later date here at council.
So that would allow, that would allow the bureau to get started...
Right.
...equally among all the districts, and then the other half of that has to be amplified a little bit.
That's right.
The formula would go back to where? Transportation Committee, or...
Public Works.
Public Works. Okay.
Point of order?
Yes.
Could we just ask our street maintenance experts? I mean, it absolutely makes sense.
Ask. Go ahead. Ask. Ask. Because I've got four people up here.
Yes.
I've got four people who still want to speak.
So I can ask. In terms of how the work is organized in a cost-effective way, is it doable to do what we're saying?
It's doable.
In terms of directing crews and that kind of thing?
It's doable. We can make it work.
Okay. Ms. Muzakowski.
I have no objection to that recommendation. That allows the crews to get hired, allows the work to get started. But I would like to ask that Public Works come back as quickly as possible with looking at taking everything into consideration here, where there was a deadlock between both positions, whether or not there's a merged position that makes some sense, and see if they can come up with that.
Okay. Ms. Chick? Ms. Chick? No. Okay. Ms. Walters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Scott, are you currently working on paving the streets now? Have you already started the work?
Not on these streets, no.
The charts here talk about the proposed 2000 to 2002 traffic congestion relief plan. So that would suggest, this being 2001, that some work had already been started.
No. It was just when we became aware of the money was coming.
All right. Council members, there's another chart. I don't know whether you have it here. It's listed in ranking order by the districts that get the most to the least. And somehow or another, the ones that get the most correlate to the votes in support of this plan. The districts -- let me read it. It begins with CD 12, 3, 2, 11, 5, and 7. And then we get a mean in there. And below that are all the other districts, 6, 9, 15, 14, 8, 4, 10, 1, and 13, being the last one. I'm sure, Mr. Scott, that you can come up with better formulas for surfacing these streets than you've presented us so far.
Mr. Padilla.
Madam President, thank you. Two items. Number one, I will support this interim step that was introduced via motion to allow for each of the districts to go forward with the 2 and 1/2 miles, with some disappointment, because we're just going to replay this all over again. Okay? So we could take 2 and 1/2 times 15, and that many miles is what's underway. The balance of that goes to committee. And by the way, we need to commit to a certain time period by which committee hears it, and it comes back to council, so the work can continue in an expeditious manner. But we're going to rehash the same debate that we've already had in committee, in Public Works, and in Budget and Finance. And it's going to come back here, and we're going to rehash the same thing and probably reach the same deadlock. So I think we're passing up on the opportunity today. But for the sake of moving forward, I'll support it. But --
Okay. I think it's going to be frustrating, though it may be. I think the challenge is going to be yours as the committee chair to work with the Bureau to find a formula that can, in fact, be supported by a majority of the council.
We've been trying that for six months.
Well, I know. But, you know, welcome to the city council, Alex.
Yeah.
Hold on. Mr. Hernandez.
God, Madam Chair, it's going to be fun next year. Now, my understanding from Mr. Pacheco's motion, and I just wanted to clarify this, is you're saying 2.5 miles across the board, across -- for everybody. So that would change the current allocation for CD 13. And so we are changing the formula. And I have no problem with a 2.5 as a base.
I was reading the page. It says 13 at 2.5.
Okay, well, the one I have shows 2.0 total. But I'd like to keep it at 2.5. Huh?
You have the revised, but this would be a risk of --
Right. Which one are we -- which is before us? Yeah, 2.5.
But I mean, I don't have a problem with 2.5. I just want to point that out.
No, I don't want to -- I don't want to make a -- I think the appropriate thing is to go with whoever has the minimum right now. If it's 2.0, then it should be 2.0, not --
Okay. That was why I wanted to ask the question.
Well, then, Mr. Scott should give us the accurate number. 2.5. Okay, thank you.
2.5. Okay, good. So maybe I should have that one. Did I get, like, 12 extra miles on the revised one?
All right. Can we -- the motion before us now, the last time I checked, is to adopt Mr. Pacheco's motion, which would give each district the equivalent of the minimum that appeared in the chart, 2.5 miles, to start with, so that Mr. Scott can start the work. And the remaining miles are going back to the Public Works Committee for another effort to resolve how they will be allocated.
But, Madam President, my -- if it wasn't already made clear, Mr. Padilla, I think very appropriately said, "We have to have a certain date by which that report comes back quickly."
Yes.
Can we add that to the motion? Like, 30 days from now?
Okay.
Three weeks.
Three weeks. All right. So Mr. Padilla commits to bring something back to us in three weeks, and we can do this all over again.
Mr. Wax's committee.
Mr. Wax's committee. All right. Now, look, I mean --
Wax agrees.
Yeah. Yeah. I just want you to know, for those of you who are frustrated by this, it took 51 years to get the canal sidewalks reopened. But they are open. Go down and take a look. You can't use them for traffic, though. All right.
Mr. Wax, thanks for the speed. That was good.
Yeah. Okay, look, we've got to -- we all understand, and a number of you have mentioned the need for speed. I will be happy to remind Mr. Wax of the need for speed. Don't lose it, guys. We're not done yet. Open the roll on Mr. Pacheco's motion. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that's done. We're not done yet. Don't leave. We have a couple more items. This item is done.
Let's cheer Mr. Pacheco for his --
I think you ought to cheer Mr. Scott for his forbearance.
Only one capping is Pacheco, I think.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right. Item 26, Ms. Walters has suggested we continue that until --
Friday.
Friday.
February 9.
Fourth with on the previous item.
Yeah. Well, it's only going -- the fourth with on the first part. The second part's going to committee.
Right.
Which brings us, I believe, to --
There's also two closed session items that can be continued.
Hang on. Yeah, right. I'm sorry.
Items 40B and to be continued to February 13th, and 41A continues to February 14th.
All right. Now, the -- remember, guys, we only have 10 people coming in on Friday, which means it's important that those of you who are expected come, so we can do these things that are continued. That, I believe, brings us to item 38, called special by Mr. Fuhrer.
Madam President, there's item number 15. There's a substitute motion on it.
Oh, right. We had an amendment on 15. Sorry, I lost track of it. We had called 15 special for purposes of an amendment. 15A has been distributed. If there is no objection to the amendment by Mr. Holden, we'll determine that what we're voting on is 15A. And if that is the case, seeing no objections, open the roll on 15A, 15 as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. 15 is approved as amended.
And the ordinance is over one week.
And the ordinance goes over one week, as they all seem to these days. Okay. Now I believe we're at item 38, called special by Mr. Fuhrer for an amendment.
It was called special, Madam President, for a substitute motion that's on the table.
Okay. There is a substitute motion on the table. Give you all a minute or two to find it. Why don't you just say, while the public is waiting, what it is?
Yeah, just very quickly. Item 38 was a motion introduced by our colleague, Mr. Burnson, myself, and our colleague, Mr. Ridley Thomas, last week regarding the Sunshine Canyon landfill. There was a debate whether the county was going to continue to have in place an environmental monitor at the site at the time the motion was introduced. The motion would have demanded that there be such a monitor, and if the county didn't do it, the city should do it. This -- since that time, the county has said they're going to do it. In any event, it's a good insurance policy for the residents of the neighboring communities around Sunshine Canyon that we adopt 38A, which creates the position authority in the city for the environmental monitor, and states that in the event the county chooses to reject its monitor any time down the road, that the monitor whose position we're authorizing be funded, and that that funding come from the landfill operator.
Okay. Open the roll on Mr. Fuhrer's substitute version of 38A, of 38. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved, fourth with on that. We do have two items to be heard in closed session, and we are down to 10. And we are going to have public comment. We're going to have public comment next. We've continued two of the closed session items, because we took a long time on some of the note and files here. So we're going to have public comment. This is a time for members of the -- to hear from members of the public on items not on today's agenda. And while -- when they're done, we're going to clear the room, except for people who are in public. Oh, Mr. Holden, is he gone, or is he? We've lost a quorum. Mr. Holden has disappeared. Can somebody find out if he's -- yeah. He's coming back. He is coming back. That's okay. I just want to know that he's coming back, and they're checking. Yeah, it's just, you know, when we lose somebody, we get nervous. As long as we found him. That's all I want to know. Yeah, but we do have to do these closed session items, and we do have to hear from the public. Okay. All right. Well, members of the public, I'll give you the option. You are certainly entitled to wait until Mr. Holden, who's on his way back, gets here, or if you like, we can -- you can talk to the other nine of us. Mr. Robinson, you're up first. Do you want to -- Ms. Lux, you want to wait, or you want to? It's up to you.
Thank you very much for letting me speak here on point to comment. My name is Joan Lux, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Coingapass Neighbourhood Association area. Very recently, in part due to a favorable economy and a disproportionate amount of applications for single-family residents' construction in Council District 4, causing some alarming consequences. Although the Hollywood Hills area is covered by Council District 2, 3, 4, 5, 11, and 13, the heaviest growth in requests for construction is in Council District 4 and 11. And for the most part, because the land is cheaper in Council District 4, unfortunately, the lots remaining in Council District 4 are the most difficult to build because of the topography. In Plumb yesterday, the hillside ordinance was discussed and sent out to the planning department for a report, a suggestion by the chair to review the ordinance and possibly permit condos in the Hollywood Hills. If the infrastructure to support increased density was either in place, proposed, or likely to get funded, multiple units may be appropriate. With narrow streets and limited parking, it is not. Thanks to Councilman Savornich, who is Chair of the Transportation Committee, two PSRs in the Barham-Coingapass corridor were approved for -- to commence -- to be commenced immediately. But realistically, even the recently approved call for projects won't get funded for 2000 -- till the year 2004, and won't be constructed until 2006 or '07. So even with current conditions, we won't get any relief for another six to seven years. In addition, the Planning Commission just recently approved a housing task force report recommending that the city council consider increasing density, reduce parking requirements, and in some cases, eliminate public hearings altogether. This report on affordable housing evolved with only one workshop and virtually no notice except for 20 realtors. I, unfortunately, was not one of those realtors, but as one who believes in creative solutions as a means of resolving needed affordable housing, I ask that this council consider mixed-use development in designated commercial zones, financial incentives, and review of the city's existing inventory of 9,200 buildings. I ask that the public hearing process be well noticed and broad-based, and that the appropriate infrastructure be in place or already funded before any increased density issues are approved. Recognizing that Los Angeles has the least amount of open space for any large city in the United States, please do not amend the hillside ordinance to permit increased density. Please enforce it, and look to other designated areas for mixed-use development in order to meet the affordable housing needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
Madam President, members, George Bush is certified and sworn. We owe him our allegiance. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes the public comment period, and I still don't see Mr. Holden. So -- well, let's find out where he is. Is he -- he's probably in the stairwell. As long as he's not stuck in an elevator, we're okay. You know, guys, if we actually started at 10, we'd probably be done by now. I don't see him. Oh, there he is. All right. Mr. Holden, we missed you. Okay. We are now -- the council's now going to go into executive session to discuss matters of litigation, and so I must ask all of you who are not part of the executive session to please depart.
Madam President, do you wish to clear the desk?
Yes. While we're clearing the room, let's clear the desk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hernandez requests to be excused February 14th to leave at 11:30. Meets council policy. That's for city business.
Okay. That's unanimous vote.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused city business February 21st to leave at 11:30. A motion is required.
If he gets here at 10, we'll let him leave at 11:30. Ms. Chick moves. Mr. Holden seconds.
That clears the desk, Madam President.
All right. That clears the desk, but we haven't quite cleared the room yet. Secured the room. Members of the council, sit tight. We're almost done. Madam Clerk?
Item 40A settlement in the amount of $100 -- excuse me, $30,000 in the case of Edward Burko versus City of L.A.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved, fourth with on that. Next item?
Item 41B settlement in the case of Dixon versus City of L.A. in the amount of $135,000.
All right. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right. That's approved, fourth with on that as well. That's Mr. -- you have to push the button, Rudy. I should hope you were. All right. Record Mr. Savornich as a no vote. Doesn't change the outcome. That, I believe, brings us to the end of the agenda.
That clears the desk.
And if anybody besides me has an adjourning motion, let's, please rise for adjourning motions. And I will call you in just one second. Let me just start by asking that we adjourn in memory of Jim O'Neill, who was a longtime resident of the Venice and Marina area. He's the husband of Argonaut columnist Helen O'Neill, who is probably one of the most ubiquitous people in the, in the district. She's a booster for all kinds of wonderful organizations, and her husband was very actively involved in that with her. And over the last few years, she's had to divide her time between her public career and making Jim's life a little happier at the end. He's survived not only by his wife, but by four children, his stepson, and a number of grandchildren. Ms. Chick.
Yes. First, I'd like to ask us to adjourn in memory of Nathan Cohen, who died at the end of last month at the age of 91. He was a former UCLA social welfare expert who helped shape the field of social work and led an important study on the causes of the 1965 Watts riot. As Dean of UCLA School of Social Welfare, became one of the major forces behind that comprehensive two-year study, and I thought in, in light of what we just spoke about, it would be interesting to share with you that the study raised the level of discourse about what was going on in Los Angeles to one of broader nature than what had been seen before, and showed that what went on in Watts at that time was a revolt rather than a riot. Mr. Cohen's report warned against increasing police power to stifle urban unrest. He leaves his wife Sylvia, his daughter Susan, two sons David and Edward. As a former social worker, I wanted to make sure that we recognize this man's accomplishments. And then very tragically and unfortunately to ask that we adjourn in memory of an elderly couple, Mr. and Mrs. William and Bertha Lasky, constituents of mine in West Hills, who were horrifically murdered and their house set afire just a few days ago. The police, of course, are investigating. At this point, there are no leads, but many of the couple's neighbors and friends expressed comments about what a special couple they were. They were active in the Jewish community in the West Valley, and just good people and good neighbors. They leave at least one daughter, who is a professor of special education at Cal State Northridge. I will get the other information needed and give it to the clerk.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, Madam Chair, Members of the council, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Feng Chao Chen. He passed away January 29th. He immigrated from Canton, China, and played a leading role basically in founding Cathay Bank. He was a scholar in Chinese classics, and he's better known as the founder of Phoenix Bakery, which is now a landmark in Chinatown. He leaves his brother, his sons, who are very much involved with the business, Kelly and Kenneth, and his daughter Catherine, and eight grandchildren.
All members on this.
All members. Mr. Holden.
Madam President, Members, sad to announce that Elna Green passed away. She was a national evangelist for 65 years, where she worked hard for people at the Valley Rescue Mission, the Valley Aid Center, the Compton Aid Center, and the Willbrook Center. She was well-loved by everyone who knew her. Services were beheld Friday, the 9th, at Christ Memorial Church, 11:00 a.m., San Fernando Valley, California, San Fernando, California. She survived by her daughter Gloria Davis and Bishop Isaac Davis, and of course, she would be missed by all those she's helped and served.
Thank you. Anybody else? Call the roll. Thank you. We are adjourned. See you on Friday, I hope, at 10 o'clock.
Your city, your channel.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.
Thank you.
Deborah Campbell.
Councilmembers, if I may pass on this one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any council member that wishes to speak on this item before we vote? Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
This item is approved. Fourth with. Councilman Ridley Thomas, you have a motion for reconsideration?
Please, Mr. President, item number 44. I would move reconsideration.
Councilman Ridley Thomas has moved reconsideration on item number 44. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, the item is before us. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, Members of the council, the request had been made to continue this item, which I think is appropriate, with the exception of the need to move forward with staff positions in order to get the RFP in place. The RFP can't be moved forward. Now, we're not talking about evaluating the RFP. We're not talking about making any decisions about it. It is essentially the preparation. Therefore, move that this item, particularly recommendation number four, dealing with the staff position on today's council agenda, move forward as requested in item 44A, just the staff positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Is there any other council member that wishes to speak at this time? Not Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion is before us. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
That item is approved.
Fourth with, sir.
Fourth with. Next?
Item number 35, called special by Councilmember Fuhr. There's amending motion, Padilla Miskowski on the file.
Mr. Fuhr, number 35.
Where is the amending motion? I haven't seen the amending motion.
It's 35A. It's on there.
You know, if we could just, let me, okay, hold on. Okay. Yeah, the, um, okay, so this amending motion is essentially, is consistent with the request from the mayor's office, Mr. Padilla, is that correct? Is the, a question I would have for city staff, is someone here who can speak to this? Sharon, perhaps, or somebody? Ron?
Quit palling around.
Regarding item 35, which is the risk management issue. You know, obviously, it's extremely important for us to move forward with this item. This item isn't so much a reform issue as it is a way for us to assure that we're able to handle the litigation that has been and will continue to be generated, not just by the Rampart issue, but by police litigation matters in general. With that in mind, the mayor has requested that, given the importance of this, this task, that we have flexibility in how we staff the program. Can Mr. Padilla's amending motion take effect today, or must there be any further review? I, I don't mind having it happen today, as long as it's legally permissible to do so.
Under the charter, the, when you fill, when you decide not to fill positions within civil service, you have to make a determination of feasibility and infeasibility of doing it within the existing system. That has not happened, and that is a requirement for the police department to come to that conclusion after they have attempted to fill those positions. I've talked to the police department. They're going to keep the data at the, at the point in time that has, is the determination that it should be forwarded as a, as an alternative, and we shouldn't decide ahead of time that there is a problem until there is a problem.
Is there a way for us, I was going to actually ask that because Mrs. Miskowski is holding a hearing in the committee next week. I was going to ask if, if we could have the discussion next week in committee and bring it back like a week from today, but you're saying, Mr. Deaton, that it's premature because we won't have the data on which to base the conclusion required by this motion.
Right. If and when the police department goes out and has openings, which they have sent out flyers for filling those positions, and at the conclusion of two weeks, they're all filled, or at the conclusion of all three weeks, they're filled, then there is no action either necessary nor legal. If and when three, four, five, six weeks from now, there is, they have repeatedly gone out and have not filled those positions, and then I think there is a justification for, under the charter, I forget the charter section number right now, the new one, I wouldn't know it anyway, but the, anyway, there's this charter section that has to do with feasibility, et cetera. They have to make those findings. They will keep the data. They will keep us advised, and at the appropriate time, if they are not being successful, then we should act. Until we're not being successful, we shouldn't, we should not and cannot.
If I could just make a statement, because most of it was taken with Ron's answer, just real fast. I agree that we want to have as much flexibility as possible to move forward as rapidly as possible with these positions, and the spirit motivating Mr. Padilla's motion, I think, is exactly right. I would hate for us to act, however, in a way contrary to the charter today, even though the goal is a good one, only to find that if the department were to act pursuant to this, we could find ourselves on the wrong end of a complaint or litigation for that matter for violating the charter. That would be a bad result and slow things down. So if it must go in the way Mr. Deaton's describing, fine, but I do support the spirit of Mr. Padilla's action here, which I think is ultimately the right thing to do if we can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. The Chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I think we're saying the same thing here. As I read the motion that I introduced, doesn't make the conclusion today, doesn't make the finding today, we wouldn't be making the decision today to go outside of city staff to accomplish these services. But I think it's appropriate to discuss in the context of not only the magnitude of the police reform, reforms that we need to implement in the city, but the timeliness and the urgency with which we need to act, to have the dialogue, recognizing the vacancies that we've had in the department historically, the size, the numbers of the vacancies, both on the civilian side and the sworn side we have in the department, to say, in about two weeks or four, or four weeks from now, we're probably going to be ending up in this position in terms of our ability to hire, in terms of our ability to recruit for positions across the board. So recognizing that, let's at least begin to think about it, let's dialogue. It may be contrary to law to begin to plan and make decisions in that direction right now, but I think we're kidding ourselves if we think this isn't going to be a very probable option sometime down the road. Another thing I think we also need to discuss is how much, and I would ask that the committee that takes it up next week, answer some of these questions and bring back to the full council some recommendations. What exactly is the timeline that we're going to pursue? Is two weeks enough time to say, you know what, we've cast the nets and there's no fish in them? Or is four weeks, or is six weeks, or is eight? What's the timeline that we're going to follow? Again, recognizing the size of the problem and the urgency by which we need to act. That's what I understood the CLA, right.
In terms of what you want, though, that, we're on the same team if that's what.
I'm confident that it would be appropriate to act on this today. Again, it, all it does is give us the flexibility, it outlines our options, and it reiterates that there's some legalities and requirements that we would have to follow if we were going to pursue the contracting-out option. So I believe we're, we're appropriate in acting on this today and supportive of this today, but I sense some resistance or opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Deaton, prior to my calling, the next council member.
Two things. One is that I think that it's appropriate for the, the committee to monitor how well these are being filled, and at the, at the time that the police department feels as though there is a necessity to do something, and that we are not being successful in filling these positions, we should, the, the committee would then be in a position to come forward. From a budgetary standpoint, the money is in the wrong accounts at this point to do that. So at the time that it is appropriate, then a package could be put together, assuming that, that there is information to support this finding, that would put the money in the appropriate accounts and bring it back to council to actually act on. So there is, there is clearly difficulty in the police department relative to filling civilian and sworn positions, but I think there's a process that we need to go through and, before we, before the council acts.
Thank you, Mr. Deaton. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have been working on this, Members of the council, since February. That's when we first got the report from the police department, ask, making the initial request. As one might imagine, the initial request by the police department was for a much broader program and needed some really significant review and understanding. It has been reviewed by ORS. It has been reviewed and discussion with the police department. It's been reviewed and discussed in our Rampart Working Group, which has city attorney, Mr. Fuhr and I, the mayor's office, ORS as well. It has been reviewed at length with, in fact, the, the section of the police department that really needs this work. And Members of the council, if we were able to do, to share with you a little bit of the employees who are now in this division, who by way of changes in court law and application of law, by way of increase in the court cases themselves, the members of the police department, both civilian and, and sworn, who have the obligation to provide records to court cases, provide records for our own management to know how we can manage court cases, it is in a dire, dire strait. This needs to be done. It needed to be done, actually, last November, when we've had the revised integrity package put forward, but for reasons of request of delay on the part of the mayor's office and others, it was delayed. We can delay no longer. We must adopt this today. I think that item 35A, which is a request that says if we are not successful in making the hiring that we need to make, we should look at other alternatives. That's absolutely a valid approach. In fact, it's such a valid approach that the committee report that you have in front of you says that the police department shall report back in 30 days on the status of the program implementation. How are they able to do the hiring? It's so critical that they are doing that hiring. Part of our report that ORS had prepared and that ad hoc committee recommended, as well as budget and finance, was come back in 30 days and tell us. That dovetails very well with this motion, and we will very closely monitor it, manage it, and make sure that the risk management group, who is in dire need of people to perform these services, is working very closely with the risk management unit of the city attorney's office. In fact, part of this action today is put them in the same building, in the same office, so they can work fluidly together, which in fact, they are doing. They just need the space and the bodies to do it. This dovetails with that, but as Mr. Deaton says, we can't make that decision today because under the charter, we must make a finding that we have not been able to fill it in the normal process. So I ask for the council's adoption today of item 35. Let the risk management team go and hire the people it needs. Let them do the work with general services to get in the place that they need to. We will have this on committee as, as quickly as is needed, and we bring it back as is needed if they are not able to fill the positions in the normal process. And I know that we've already had, I think, risk management out there looking and ready to advertise and starting to interview for some of these positions because it's so critical that we move quickly. So I ask for the council's unanimous vote on this and give our support to the risk management division of the police department that is so necessary and vital for so many things we're doing now and that we've asked the department to do.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Mr. Deaton, if you don't mind, I, I heard the urgency expressed by Councilmember Miskowski, who also chairs the Public Safety Committee, to put these positions in place as soon as possible. And then I heard your response to Mr. Fuhr's question as to the process we would have to go through if the positions weren't filled. Why are we anticipating not being able to fill the positions? What are some of the obstacles that would prohibit us from doing that? And how is it that your process would expedite that?
Don't know the latter answer. The problem that, the reason we think we're going to have problems is we've had problems in the past.
Right.
And there's a difficulty in, in filling civilian positions in general in the police department. And that's been a historic, that's not today or tomorrow, I mean, that's, or yesterday, that's been a problem for a long time. And it has to do with several factors, some of which are correctable and some of which are not. The, so what, all I'm saying is, is that these are, these are jobs that, under the charter, have been determined to be civil service positions. Under the charter, not to do civil service positions for a particular function requires that we find that it's infeasible for this particular function not to be done in that fashion in order to, so we have to demonstrate that.
Right. And I guess the reason I'm asking the question is, let's say, filling the position requires some kind of background check. Now, is that same requirement going to apply to a private contractor trying to fill the positions?
I would certainly hope so.
And, see, I'm asking the questions because what I'm trying to get to is, the process you described to us doesn't necessarily expedite the process for us feeling, being able to fill the positions. You said, we're going to go through the process. If we can't fill the positions, then we might You said, we're going to go through the process, if we can't fill the positions, then we might allow for this process to happen after we comply with the Charter requirements that we proved we couldn't fill them. Then we might go through this process through the private sector, and in that case, they're still going to have to comply with certain kinds of provisions. Is anybody doing that kind of analysis as to what the difficulty may be, and what it is we need to do to overcome those difficulties in regards to these positions?
Jerry Greenwald, Oars. I don't believe the department has looked into this situation that deeply, but they have indicated that if we did go to an outside contractor, for instance, paralegals, paralegal firm or something like that, there would be some required background check, whether it would be as involved or as in-depth as someone from a civil service list, I don't know.
I, I'm just asking, because I think that as part of this process, what we could do today is instruct that we start looking at that process, in case it, it's something we have to analyze. I'm just not sure which ones are going to fulfill the requirement of getting the positions filled. I just think that, again, it's the same kinds of obstacles that exist in us doing it through the civil service process might also exist in the private sector trying to do it. And again, time is of the essence, and that's why I was asking, we might want to do that analysis concurrently.
Well, I would suggest that the Police Department, if they, and Oars as well, if at the point in time that there is a determination that the process of filling these positions is not working, before they come back to council with an alternative, they should look at how they're going to approach it, so they have a program.
Right.
In order to accomplish it. In other words, they have to address the issue of background checks, and why hiring contract personnel is somehow going to be better and quicker and less turnover than, than hiring civil servants.
And that's what I'd like to see happen.
I think that, I think that's, but that comes, comes at the point in time the Police Department makes the determination they can't fill.
Okay.
If they can't fill, then they've got to figure out, what are they going to do in place of this, and what are the feasibilities of getting around the problem that, for some reason, we can't attract.
Right.
Regular civil servants.
But I just wanted to establish that you started your presentation, Mr. Deaton, with the fact that, historically, we haven't been able to fill these positions as fast as we'd like to.
Historically, we have not been able to fill civilian positions.
As fast as we'd like to.
As like, as we'd like to. We have, we have filled, or sworn. We have filled, but this is somewhat the same function, but it, because of factors that are happening in the court, this is a much more substantial staff for this function than we've ever had before, and much more emphasis, one could argue that because of that, the emphasis is going to be different, and maybe they're recruiting will be better. I, I don't know.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Pacheco was providing me with valuable insights that will impact public policies for years to come. I thank you, Mr. Pacheco. On this matter, I think all of us are on receipt of a letter dated today from Mayor of this city on this subject, and it claims, I think, I could read verbatim, while I fully support the goals of reform. Now, Mr. President, somehow I find it difficult to reconcile yesterday's release from the Mayor's Office on matters related to reform, and today's letter. So it seems to me that veracity ought to count for something. To the extent that that is the case, the Chair of Public Safety has indicated for several months this matter has been evaluated. There are no secrets here, and there's no need, at this moment, to do anything other than what has been in place for some time. I rise to support that motion, and that which appears to us today as an amendment be sent to committee for its due consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Fuhrer.
Mr. President, I, I wanted to rise because I thought it was so important to underscore some points that Ms. Sikowski made about the significance of this. In the Rampart Working Group, let's just tell it like it is, we've heard very bluntly that because of the staffing problems in this area, people who've been arrested, who may well be, they haven't been adjudicated as such, but may well be dangerous criminals, walk. And they walk because we aren't being able to provide the information that we're compelled by law to do to a court. And that's a bad place to be. We can't be in that position anymore. And, you know, Cindy's emphasis on the importance of this action, the underlying action, is so right, and I hope will lead not only to this action happening unanimously today, but other actions down the pike. These positions are not, from a public standpoint, very interesting. They don't put more patrol officers on the street, they don't guarantee there'll be less gang violence in a neighborhood, the things that we're elected to do. This is not a visible demonstration of that. But these positions will assure that we don't end up being in the lousy position of having a judge say, this person can't be tried because the Police Department hasn't had the ability to provide information the Defense Council's entitled to get, and that person goes on the street. As for the amending motion, I think there may be an emerging consensus that the sense of the motion is the right sense, that flexibility is a good thing to do, that it goes to the committee chaired by Ms. Sikowski, that in the event, in the very near future, should there be a problem in hiring, it'll come back. And that'll be the end of that, that piece of it. There's no disagreement, as the policy matters, to whether that flexibility should be there in the event it's necessary, it's mandatory. I don't want any more people who well could be criminals to walk because a judge says the city's not systemically prepared to deal with our own obligations. This is, it's interesting, if this is characterized as a reform measure, it's really not so much a reform measure. It's a measure designed to assure that we handle ourselves properly in court. It won't get to the root of so many of the other risk management issues that pervade the department. That's fundamental, it's necessary, it's next. But this is before us today, and as Ms. Sikowski noted, we've been wrestling with it a while, let's be done with it and move it forward.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Deaton, I thought I heard you say that this action would fly in the face of the city Charter. Was I correct in deducing that from what you stated?
I think Charter provides for a process that you determine whether or not it's infeasible to recruit before you decide to do something different.
Okay.
And, and therefore, I guess, your characterization is correct. I think the, the other thing is, no matter what the area, I mean, if they, if the Police Department can't hire in other areas, they should be determining that and coming forward with solutions as well, not just in this one area, in all areas.
Has this item been to Budget and Finance? Where did Mr. Fuhrer go?
This went through the Rampart Working Group, and it went through the committee that Ms. Sikowski chairs, the Ad hoc Committee on Police Something and Practices.
But it did not go to Budget and Finance?
It went to Budget, but, for the, it went to Budget, but the matter had been considered in the other committee, and just went right to the floor.
So.
We didn't have a discussion on the subsequent elements of this budget.
You waived it in Budget and Finance?
It came to the Budget Committee as an agendized item, and so we sent it to the council floor, having already had discussions about it, and it hasn't had a more thorough discussion there.
All right.
If I might clarify, 35A, I think, 35, I fully support.
Right.
I think 35, the item 35, and the risk management and the budgetary issues related, I think is a very high priority item, and I think, as was mentioned before, deserves unanimous support.
So it's 35A?
And Ms. Walters, 35A didn't even come to the committee, that's new today.
Okay. It has not been to committee. If we were to act on 35A today, does, and you say that there is a council, there's a Charter provision that should prevent us from doing that, does that set a precedent for other departments in the future to make the same kind of determination that this 35A would make?
Well, my problem with 35A is that it gives the presumption that we should contract out before we have established by, that there is, in fact, no, it is infeasible to do otherwise.
And there would be other, if, if we recruit and are not able to hire the personnel at that time, they can come back and ask for.
Right. And also, the, the budgetary numbers in 35, in other words, where the money is in the accounts is, if you're going to contract, are in the inappropriate accounts anyway. So it would have to come back to council for transfers of funds, et cetera, in any fashion, in any, in any way.
You, you just answered my next question, so I'll go on to the last one. Very quickly, the procedure, what procedure would be followed if we acted on 35A today? Because if it's not consonant with the Charter, how do we proceed if that's adopted, 35A is adopted?
Well, quite frankly, if I were the Police Department, I would still proceed to document the fact that I couldn't recruit and couldn't fill the positions, because at the end of the day, you have to justify your position in order to contract out in any fashion. So it just gives a, the impression that we have made the decision already that you can't recruit. I think we need to make, do that on a factual basis and come back. I'm not against, in, given this circumstance, given the situation we have in this particular area, and the need to respond to the requests from the courts, and the, et cetera, if we cannot fill the positions, then we need to do something else. There's no question about that. I'm just.
We don't need the authority upfront.
We don't, we need the procedure to be followed, is all.
Councilmembers, I'm going to support 35, and not support 35A, and urge you to do likewise.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Bernson.
Yes, members of the council, I think there's no question about the fact that we have to act on this and do it immediately, and put this process in place. But it lends to a much deeper problem. The deeper problem is that there's something wrong with the system that doesn't allow us to recruit the type of personnel that we need in the department. I don't know where it's broken down. Other departments throughout the country don't seem to have the same problem. There's something wrong. Either it's in our personnel system, it's in the department, somewhere along the line, the system is broken, and it needs to be fixed. Now, obviously, while we all want to abide by the Charter, there are provisions in the Charter that allow us to act in emergency-type situations where the city has to act. Am I not correct about that, Mr. Deaton?
That's correct.
Just yes or no?
Yes.
And I think that we need to look very seriously at this thing, because, and as I read 35A, it doesn't say to go ahead and, and contract out or to hire. It says if it, if there's no other solution, it gives you the flexibility to do so. And I think we have to give the city the flexibility to do its job, and that is to not allow criminals to walk, to be able to carry out the functions that are, are important for the city. And obviously, we need a complete overhaul of our personnel recruitment system. There's something wrong, we need to find out what it is. I would urge, I would, I would urge the department to, to really either bring in somebody, an expert, to analyze what we're doing wrong, or, or some outside help, and tell us why we're not able to fill positions that are equivalent in pay or higher than other agencies throughout the country. And we have a great retirement system and other things. I don't know what the answer is, but I know we need to find out. As far as 35A is concerned, I don't have any problem with voting for it today. It just, it simply sets up an option and flexibility for the department so they can do the job that we know has to be done. So I'm going to vote for 35A, and I'm going to certainly vote for 35 today. But I would ask that we really take a look at what we're doing wrong. We're doing something wrong on recruitment.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise to offer a friendly correction to comments made by my colleague from the 5th District, with your permission, sir. He characterizes this as something other than reform. If we are talking about a matter of how we present this critically important department in our city, if we are talking about issues related to recruitment, personnel, management liability, the whole range of things, I doubt that we can avoid recognizing that this is somehow connected to reform. And if, in fact, we take this as an opportunity to recognize that, rather than in a frontal way that reform is being hammered by the Mayor of this city, that in a subtle way, an appeal to flexibility in this regard may be another way of dealing it, you can be most assured that this has something to do with reform. Mr. President, with your permission, and in complete violation of the rules that govern this council, I move the previous question.
Hasn't stopped us before. Chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not so, not so fast. Had offered this motion for the obvious reasons, not as a substitute or anything in conflict or contradiction with Item 35 that's before us today. We've gone back and forth, there's members on both sides who believe it's appropriate to vote on 35A today, and those who wish to refer to committee. I would move that we vote on 35A today, as well as Item 35, and ask for your support for both.
Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas. I think for the obvious here.
For the request of the inimitable council member of the 11th District, I move the previous question on the whole nine yards, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Is there any objection to the previous question? If not, Mr. Clerk, what do we have before us?
35A is before you first.
Okay.
Question, no vote on 35A.
Is that a point of order, Mr. Fuhrer? Thank you, and we were waiting.
We have two motions, I think. One was to vote on it, and one was to send it to committee. Those are the only choices, it's not to deep-six it, right? So which is before us now? Which substitutes for the other?
Well, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference, because in any event, the bottom line will be the same.
Maybe. Mr. Deaton is standing up, but you don't have a vote.
I agree with Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Oh, that's a dangerous thing to do.
Whatever the chair's pleasure. What are we voting on?
35A is now before us.
I ask.
Okay, if 35A is approved, I believe that is a substitute for 35, or is an amendment?
No, it's just an amendment.
Excuse me, it's amendment. If it fails, it goes to committee.
Yes.
Okay? Here we go.
I ask for a no vote on 35.
Open the roll on 35A, and tabulate the vote.
Three i's, seven no's.
Well, that was resounding. So that item goes to committee.
Right.
Ad hoc committee. Okay?
Now 35.
Now we have item number 35 before us.
That's a yes.
Does anyone wish to speak on item number 35?
Oh, no.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Nine i's, one no.
Okay, that item is approved. Next item.
Item number 45, called special by Councilmember Padilla. Motion is required.
Mr. Padilla, item number 45.
Yes, Mr. President, call special for the purposes of moving both A and B on item 45.
There's a motion. Any council member that wish to speak? Say none. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
Okay. Without objection, we're going to send 35 forthwith. Okay, say no objections. Okay. Without objection, we're going to send 35 forthwith. Okay, seeing no objections, so ordered on that. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 47, called special by Councilmember Sivornich for an amendment.
Councilman Sivornich is a little busy right now, but I believe there's just a technical amendment on the desk.
Those are the ones-
Trust him, it's righteous.
Forthwith on item 35, please.
Did it.
Ah!
With that said, Councilwoman Walters says you better all read it. Yeah. Is there any objection, excuse me, to amendment item 47? I believe it's 47A. Okay, we have item number 47A, substitute motion before us. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
That item is approved, forthwith. Next.
Also on the desk now are the closed session items. Do you wish to hear public comment?
Yeah, why don't we do public comment real quick? I need to also caution my colleagues that we are down to a minimum quorum. There are only 10 members here. Richard Robinson, under public comment? I do not see him. Okay, so the public comment period is closed. Next item, Mr. Clerk. Why don't we take care of the housekeeping first, before we go-
Motion's for posting in referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
Councilmember's request to be excused from council attendance. Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on February 27th to leave at 11:30. It meets policy for city business.
Okay, without objection, so ordered.
Councilmember Chick requests to be excused on Wednesday, February 21st, and Wednesday, March 7th, to arrive at 10:30 and leave at 11:30. Meets policy for city business.
Without objection, so ordered.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on February 23rd to leave at noon. A motion is required for city business.
Now, that's a different story. Councilman Misakowski moves, without objection, so ordered.
Mr. President, is that in violation of the council rules?
And Councilmember Fuhr, request to be excused on March 23rd to leave at noon
meets policy for personal business.
Without objection, so ordered.
And the final one, Councilmember Holden requests to be excused for illness from today's council session.
Without objection, so ordered.
The desk is clear, except for the closed session items.
Okay. Sergeants, would you please help us secure the room for executive session? All persons present who need to be excused, if you would please excuse yourselves, that would be appreciated. We are now going into closed session. We'll be back.
of case.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
That item is approved. Next.
Item number 32C, settlement in Scott versus City case, authorized City Attorney to expend 700,000.
Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
That item is approved.
32D, settlement in Wethington versus City, authorized City Attorney to expend 300,000 in settlement of case.
Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
That item is approved.
And 32E, settlement in Zant versus City, authorized City Attorney to expend 210,000 in settlement of case.
Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
That item is approved.
The desk is clear.
Okay. Are there adjourning motions, council members? There are. Would everyone please rise for adjourning motions? The chair recognizes Councilman Bernson for an adjourning motion.
Yes, members of the council, we had the passing of one of the jazz greats in J.J. Johnson, who passed away, and I think was noted in today's papers. J.J. Johnson was one of the, probably if not the greatest, but certainly one of the greatest all-time trombone players. He performed with the jazz greats, Charlie Parker, Dizzy Gillespie, and many, many others. And I would ask that we adjourn his memory.
Other adjourning motions? Councilwoman Misakowski?
I'd like to ask the council to adjourn in the memory of James Del Gercio. Jim was a retired attorney who had a short battle with cancer, but he died at the age of 68. He'd been a strong father to his three children, had supported his wife, who was a longtime member, Patty, of the Tarzana Property Owners Association, a longtime board member. Jim, in retirement, was able to enjoy golf and gardening, and the company and love of his family, and also his, his brothers. He is survived by his wife Patty, his son and two daughters, his mother, and his two brothers.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, request that we adjourn in memory of Antonio Ramirez Cruz, 48-year-old resident of Panorama City in my district, who was unfortunately a victim of a random act of violence over the course of the last weekend. He was washing his car, had a public car wash, where he was assaulted and shot by three people who were taken into custody soon after the incident. But assault weapons were used in the course of the crime. He was the oldest of 10 brothers and sisters, and his family also lives in the district, in the Pacoima area, and he will be sorely missed. He's also the oldest brother of Jesse Cruz, who's a member of our Bureau of Sanitation and is one of the leaders in the West Los Angeles area for the department.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, at the request of Mr. Holden, I ask that we adjourn in memory of George Thomas Perry, who worked as a skycap for American Airlines for 44 years. He was an active member of the 100 Black Men and a volunteer organizer for Councilman Holden's annual turkey giveaway during the holidays. He lived in the city of Los Angeles for some 59 years. Graveside Services will be held on Friday, February 9, at the Rose Hill Cemetery, 11:00 a.m.
Thank you. Others, I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Robert G. Bob Rados, who passed away on February 1. He was born on August 9, 1922. Bob was a former commissioner for the City of Los Angeles, for the CRA, as well as the Harbor Commission, a longtime serving member of the Harbor Commission, appointee of the late Mayor Bradley. Bob was a very good friend, survived by a loving, loving family, including his wife, Marge. There are many times you hear the expression, "A perfect gentleman." Bob Rados was a perfect gentleman. I would like to ask, we adjourn in his memory. Call the roll. Seeing no further business, this council is adjourned. Have a good day.
Thank you.